Do we need to open the meeting? Okay, so, good morning. It is February 27th and I'll call to order the Board of County Commissioners' regular meeting and we'll start with Potts and Associates update from Zach. If you're ready, Zach.
There we go. Good morning, how are we doing?
Good morning.
Man, it's gotta connect audio and unmute myself. It's just a wonderful, wonderful program. Well, thanks for taking the time, really appreciate it. I don't have a whole lot for you guys. Lori, did you get my email about the correct people to message?
Correct, thank you so much for doing that, I appreciate it.
Of course, no problem. You know, I've been kinda going through the budgets. Every time I go through these things, oh, there's a new substitute or there's another line crossed out or something. So, they are changing very, very quickly right now. There is a lot going on in the background, a lot of horse trading. I guess I'll go to the really juicy fun stuff. It looks like at 12:30 today, there's a joint committee hearing. It's Ways and Means and Appropriations, I believe. They're going over the initiatives. Specifically, they're talking about, the real fun one is the carbon, oh, whatever, the carbon commitment initiative thing. Here's what's really happening in the background. And I'm researching more exactly how the initiative process works, but they basically are treating the initiatives like bills. They can amend them and do what they want with them, et cetera. The majority party's playing pretty dirty right now. They're, what they're doing is they're tying pet projects, if you will, to these initiatives passing. And so, for example, the salmon, there's a salmon recovery fund that's been in place since the, oh gosh, early 2000s. And it's had its own funding mechanism and everything. Well, what they're doing is they're now tying the retention of the Climate Commitment Act, that's what it is. So, they're tying the funding to that salmon recovery program to the Climate Commitment Act. So, they're putting all of these core projects that, you know, people worked for for a long time and they're tying the funding to that. And it's so that, you know, they can keep their other big spending, big ticket core projects that they, you know, have put in in the last two or three years. And so, it's, it's really, really getting dirty on this and I don't know how they're gonna be able to do it. I don't know what's gonna shake out, but if you got some time at 12:30 this afternoon, I would be watching that committee because it'll be really interesting to watch. I, I, I really don't know what more to say about it, but it's getting dirty and it's gonna get ugly here. And they may, if they take up these, these initiatives, they may just basically vote to leave everything in place. And also codify some of these taxes, whether it be the income tax, B and O, climate commitment stuff, and they might start tying some funding to it, is what they're trying to do. So, you can't get rid of them without cutting a whole bunch of programs. It, it's, it's certainly interesting. The other component that I'm noticing in the budgets this year that's more prevalent is, let me pull this up right here. I'm looking at it right here. It says, they're tying things in here. It says, "The departments shall strive to invest at least 20% of the appropriated, provided under this," or appropriation provided under this subsection, "with, by, and for organizations as defined by the Office of Equity." So, there's this Office of Equity out there that they're referencing quite a lot right now that, that doesn't really seem to be under anybody's control and it's just a, like the diversity, equity, inclusion stuff that they seem to have kind of unfettered control of who gets money and what organizations are defined as diversity organizations. And then, the budget writers are carving out 20% of a bunch of different things as delineated by that office. So, a little bit shady. That's personal opinion, I guess, in there, but I really, I think it's scary when we start seeing things, money appropriated like that, that doesn't necessarily have any specific appropriation tied to it, I guess. So, that's kinda my report. Is there anything specific you guys are looking for? Anything I can look up for you? I got the budget in front of me. What questions might you have?
Zach, first question. So, if they make these changes like TAMP's tying surfboard to the climate commitment bill, will it still go in front of the voters for a vote with the changes amended to it?
That's what I'm trying to figure out and I've been researching this and I don't have an answer for you. I don't have an answer for you. I, I'm trying to figure that out because the, the initiatives behave different than a referendum. You know, it's an initiative process, it gets a chance to go the legislature. So, I, I don't know. I will absolutely get back to you as soon as I find out that answer, though.
Thank you.
Hasn't happened like this. I mean, in my time over here, we haven't had this big a contentious issues and, you know, a slew of initiatives filed that are counter to, you know, big fundraising, you know, sources of funds for the state. So, I, I'm, to be honest with you, I'm kinda learning as we go here, too.
Next question. So, we've got the West Clickitat Assisted Living Facility is in the supplemental budget for Department of Commerce and the Housing Trust Fund?
Yes.
What's the best thing that we can do to try to make sure that the Senate is going to go along with that because we didn't see that in the Senate proposal?
So, right now, I've got, for the Department of Commerce and the Housing Trust Fund, 23 to 25. I am looking at 8.5 million, the Housing Trust account. I would definitely be contacting the senators on the list that I sent you on the Ways and Means Committee, minority and majority. So, letting them know that that's really important to you guys and be very specific on exactly the amount you need and in that budget.
So, are you saying that the, the Senate side only had $8 million in that whole total?
So, there's 36.5 million of the state's taxable building construction towards it and 8.5 of the Washington Housing Trust account, state appropriation. They're sending those to affordable housing. That's, that's the problem. They're putting it all towards affordable housing and not towards that specific project.
Right. So, because what I'm seeing here on the House side, the total budget is 153 million for the Housing Trust Fund dollars.
Uh, that is, let me see, I'm, I'm putting that toward, I'm doing the, are you searching the most recent document?
This came out fiscal state budgets proposal, budget summary. I think this came out a couple of days ago.
Let me see what, I don't know what the date is on this one.
February 18th.
Okay, uh, first read time. This is on the 22nd. So, there is, if you, if you wanna search the budgets, go, go back to, here's what I'll do. I will send out an email with all of the budget bill numbers for you. There are, this is the engrossed substitute Senate bill.
Okay, so you're looking at Senate. I was looking at House.
Yeah, and the House, I'll tell you what the House is. So, we're on the engrossed substitute House bill as well. So, yeah, we're, we're on, we're looking at the engrossed bills. So, long story short, they put out a new version. So, I will send all of the bill numbers and with the links to the most recent versions for you guys.
Okay.
Thank you.
So, but with, with that said, definitely be messaging the, the Senate because it sounds like the operating budget, they are gonna go with the Senate bill.
And that's on operating, not capital?
Yes, and capital, they'll, they're still coming back together on that. I don't know which one they're gonna actually run with. They're still talking about that one. But I would recommend definitely with that list of, or actual members of the committees and appropriations and ways and means, definitely message them. And I did include some of their legislative aides. Message their legislative aides as well. I mean, the LA's get, get the messages on both ones, but they go into kinda like different, different silos in their, their email forum.
Great, thank you. Mr. Christopher, do you have questions? Anything else for you, Jake?
No, anything, I can just talk with Zach offline.
Okay.
Yeah, just give me a call myself or shoot me a message and I'll, I'll pull exactly what they're doing right now. They're being pretty tight lipped about stuff, but on, on that project specifically, definitely get emails going out.
This is kind of a question of being new to some of this. Have you ever seen a time where they've added things to these initiatives like this?
No, I, I have not seen, no, I, I have not. In my over decade being here, there has never been a time when there were multiple initiatives filed that directly went after as many taxes as they're going after right now. I think it's kind of a testament to the times, you know, I mean, that they've been spending money like crazy and they need to raise money and, you know, this hasn't happened in my time over there. The last that we saw anything like this would have been in the early 80s. I think I have to look at the, the actual year and it was when the Republicans kind of in just a big wave took over the legislature. They put on the food tax because that's all they could think of to fix how upside down the state was. And the next election, they all got unelected. So, that's what happened last time.
And so, like the salmon recovery where it's tied to, that's a kind of a longstanding program and if they tie it to this and it fails, will we lose that?
No, if it fails and they do that, then it would just stay status quo.
Okay.
And what the, what the, the majority party's trying to do is like, there's some big programs they put in recently, you know, maybe around the, the equity stuff, whatever homelessness and things like that, that they don't wanna lose and they're not willing to compromise on and they've taken out of the regular budget and that's where they're looking at this extra funding. So, if they can't hang it all, like if they can't tie it all together, it just stays status quo and next year, they're gonna have to really look at, you know, what are we funding?
Okay, thank you. And thanks for that information, I appreciate it.
No problem at all. I'm, it's what I'm here for. If you need anything else, please just let me know.
Great.
All right, thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, have a good day.
Thanks. We opened our regular meeting with Mr. Potts and Associates, but I think I'd like to back up and call for the Pledge of Allegiance. My flag's over here today.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, infinite, and just as for all.
Thank you. So, nine o'clock, I would entertain a motion for approval of the business agenda.
Do you have anything you'd like to add, Mr. Christopher? Am I, hello?
There you are.
It's off.
No. I'm not seeing it. Do we, do we add the papers on the agenda? The office papers down the hall? You said you were gonna add that on old business, is it on here somewhere? Got it.
I would just add legislative discussion. We can do that under new business.
Okay.
Okay. Madam Chair, I would make a motion to approve the business agenda with six add-ons. Number one being a letter of support for a grant at 9:30 for Lauren Mager, Catherine Corson board reappointment under miscellaneous, Natural Resources Director's Office under unfinished business. City of Goldendale Water Bill under unfinished business. Skyline Hospital, letter of support for a grant under new business and legislative discussion under new business.
I'll second the motion.
Motion is second, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Approval of the business agenda with six add-ons, passes.
Madam Chair, I move to be approve the Commissioner Meeting Minutes from January 23rd, 2024 and January 30th, 2024 as presented.
I will second the motion.
Motion is second, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Hearing none, approval of the Commissioners Meeting Minutes. Thank you. So, we're to that portion for public comment. Those in the audience that wish to speak, please come forward and give us your name and where you're from. And the same with those on Zoom, please just raise your hand to be recognized and always remember to tell us who you are and where you're from. So, we will start with the room. Would you like to come forward for, okay, thank you. So, Zoom, do we have any hands up? There we go. So, Becky Miles.
Yes, good morning and thanks in advance for your time. I just, I've always been a big proponent of the idea of building the shelter since we have a grant to do that. But after finding out that there's only five dogs that would be in there, it seems like there would be a much better spend, in my opinion, to purchase a mobile spay-neuter unit and maybe hire a veterinarian to go around every two or three months and spay and neuter animals. We have a serious cat problem in the county and maybe work in conjunction with some of the people already doing that on a volunteer basis. And that said, I'm just wondering if, if it's been considered by the committee, if that option has, or even if the grant would even allow us to do something that wasn't a permanent structure. So, maybe you guys could just let me know if the Shelter Committee has talked about this and if not, maybe you could let them know and also, or give me a contact so I could talk to them. I just think it's, it's such a better option than five dogs. Thank you.
Thank you. So, in the room again, give you another chance. Zoom, do we have anybody else online that would like to speak this morning? Good morning, Pat Arnold.
Good morning. I've been reading a Yakima Herald article from 2013 about the change that was made around that time in the way that the wind projects were assessed. And I, it says that the change in how the county calculated the value of wind turbines switching from a fixed value to a flexible system based on a depreciation schedule. I'm wondering if the county has got, has done any studies on what the effect on revenue would have been if that change hadn't been made? And is that change still in effect? Is that still the way we do things? And do we know anything about, like I say, do we know anything about how that's affected revenue and the county's financial position? And is our solar projects being, value being assessed in the same way is my next question? And my third question is, what are you gonna do if the Goldendale Pump Storage is built? What kind of assessment's gonna happen there? Thank you.
Thank you, Pat. So, new entry, we have public comment. Would you like to come to the front of the room for any public comment this morning? I'm gonna assume not. So, moving forward, anyone else online? Jean.
Hey, good morning, everybody. Just wanted to see, just more questions here for me. Question about the, the WSU Extension Services, if there's any updates on that. Also wanted to say thanks for the workshop last week, that was super helpful, really educational. Thanks for your time.
Thank you. Someone else online this morning?
2662.
2662?
Hello Commissioners. So, I'm gonna keep my, my comment today pretty direct. For one, I really hope, and I believe that you do, but I, I just would like to hear from you. I really hope that you appreciate the people that comment at your public comment period, you know, us that do our work and, and dig through the different documents online and elsewhere and try to come up with a, a, a public comment that would make a difference. And then, my other comment would be, so Sharon, or Karen Yuleen from the Sheriff's Department, she did her thesis, she got her master's degree on the topic of wild and urban interface in Clickitat County. And what she had told me, and this has been about a year ago, but she told me that she came up with, there was not one inch of wild and urban interface in our county, not one inch of property anywhere in the county. Would you Commissioners be willing to ask her for her, for her knowledge, her experience on this subject before putting in the change in the Title 15? She obviously knows her stuff and she put it in as a thesis and, and got her master's degree. And then, my second question comment that I'd like to have answered is, you know, it seems like our county is going in the direction of grants, you know, that it seems like, you know, even, even when you talk to emergency management, that the calls are being in excess. You know, we're having more vehicle problems and such and even Carmen Nope's mentioned, well, I think we have enough vehicle calls now to get a grant through WAZOT. And I, I thought about that and grants are still taxpayer money. So, going for grants or escalating calls to get grants or putting in, you know, changing Title 15 to get more grants or this kind of thing, you know, I just want your opinion. Do you think grants are better for the people or are they not as good for the people because they're still tax dollars? So, just like your thoughts on that. Appreciate you letting us speak. Thank you.
Thank you, Tracy. Back onto Zoom, anyone else? Scott Idlin. Good morning, Scott.
Morning, cheers on work, Mr. Christopher, Mr. Anderson. It's nice to see you. It's been some time. I don't wanna take up much of your time, I just dropped away from one meeting before I head to the next and wanna let you know I'm incredibly excited to join you next Monday, probably see you next Tuesday. I really appreciate all the updates that Lori Anderson's been giving me and I've been trying to keep up to speed on your meetings and learn all I can. So, I just wanted to say good morning and let you know I'm looking forward to seeing you real soon.
And we're looking forward to seeing you. So, thank you for checking in, it's good to see, see you in person.
Yeah.
Thank you.
If I may, Madam Chair, for any of those watching or in the room that don't know, Mr. Scott is going to be our new Planning Director next week, so a little unconfusion there for you.
Thank you for that, Chair Christopher. I was scrambling this morning to get my thoughts together, but yeah, I'm looking forward to take on that role and, and being part of the planning team.
Thank you.
Have a good day.
Thank you. Anyone?
That was Tracy.
That was Tracy. Anyone else? There we are. Sherry, good morning.
Okay, it takes a minute to unclick everything. Okay, um, good morning Commissioners. I see you got a new flag, that's interesting. So, I wanna talk about county processes and involving the local inhabitants that live where people wanna do projects and proposals and applicants and all that. And, you know, let's just go straightforward with the Undercampus proposal that required a cut because it's enforced resource land off a road that can't fit 200 to 400 transient tourists a day. And, you know, this project, we all know, was pushed forward and the people appealed, we took our money, we invested in an attorney, we're still spending money, it's still an appeal, the, the county corporation is still in the waging a legal battle against the people and every taxpayer in this county should be upset about that. And because our county tax financial resources that we pay for infrastructure, roads and what have you, is being wasted in a legal battle against the people that don't wanna die because these transient tourists are on a bad road. And I've always said, if Undercampus wants to build in Clickitat County and bring people who wanna spend $600 on a freaking tent, bring them, bring them here, but put it where it won't hurt people. And so, another thing to be clear, the people are not in a battle against Undercampus. The people are in a legal battle against our county and that needs to be clear because without the county's decisions to push this all forward and push it forward and make your little mitigations and whatever, you've, you're, you're, we're fighting our county. So, let's not confuse it because Undercampus wouldn't even be a thing if our, if our county would have said, hey, guys, that road can't support it. Hey, guys, you can't get the water. Hey, guys, all the things wrong with that location. So, it's our county we're battling with. And another thing, our county can withdraw at any moment, right now, today, you're all together, you can make a decision. We're withdrawing from this legal battle with the people. We're gonna tell Undercampus that, hey, we got new evidence, you got new evidence, you can open the case right now, right now, today. You all can decide to open that back up and review the evidence about the schoolchildren on the road. But apparently, we don't care about the children and we're doing favors for our corporational friends again at the harm of the people, at the expense of the people. But what I'm saying is why don't you guys do the honorable thing? Shut this down now, stop battling the people and stop it. Just stop it now. You have the power, it's you three kings right there. You have the power. And Madam Queen, you can make it happen. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Sherry. Anyone else in the room? We'll ask one last time. And back to Zoom, is there someone with their hand raised? And we'll ask one last time. So, thank you for your comments. We do appreciate you all calling in for comment time and I'll open the floor to the Commissioners if they have anything they'd like to say. Mr. Christopher?
Well, as I made Commissioner Anderson go first last time, it's only fair that we alternate week after week, so I will go first this time. To Ms. Miles about the dog shelter and the idea of the mobile neuter unit, it's actually a really good idea. Where that would go or how that could go, I do not know. That, that board is set up by the Sheriff's Office. We have not spoken to that board, I'm not even exactly sure who's on that board. And I have not looked at the grant to see if that money can be placed, not in a brick and mortar building, but in a service. So, I would encourage you to reach out to the Sheriff's Department and they should be able to get you in contact with that board and/or let you know when that board meets again. Because that would be a good start. We have so far, this board has not been presented with any project, including the storage unit for five dogs that you mentioned by the board yet. So, there's rumors that it's coming soon, but, but we know very little. including the storage unit for five dogs that you mentioned by the board yet. So there's rumors that it's coming soon, but but we know very little. Ms. Arnold, you got three questions, which are all probably better put to the assessor. Is the change still in effect? Yes. Is solar being assessed the same way? Yes. What is going to be the assessment on pump storage? I don't know. You'll have to ask the assessor. I don't know if it fits into a different qualification or not. The depreciated method that is currently happening. This county has been fighting for the three years that, well, that me and Commissioner Anderson have been in office. We both agree that that should change. And for any of you might remember that I am actually the one that brought up that tax shift during my original campaign. So it is a fairly new development, and I'm sure you're all aware that things take time to get through state law, especially when there's lobbyists pushing the opposite direction. So we will continue to push on and getting the state to change the tax structure to get rid of that tax shift. Jean, the WSU question, Commissioner Zoller is handling the WSU stuff, so maybe she will answer that. Tracy, you asked that if we appreciate public comment, and I for one do appreciate public comment because we do a lot of times just hear the same thing from week to week. But occasionally, there's a nice new tidbit that comes over, an idea that I can work on behind the scenes to try to flush out and see if it'll, we can make some changes in the county to help the county. Will we ask Karen about the urban wildland interface? I personally will not because she is not a paid consultant for the county. If the county deems that it needs a an expert, then that's kind of a different story, but without crossing lines there. You asked the question on grants or thoughts on grants. Personally, I don't like grants because it's just a way to for the state to take more money. But in the same regard, if you don't accept a grant for this, that, or the other, it doesn't mean the citizens get their money back. The state's never going to give you your money back. All that means is that grant money is going to get shifted into Snohomish County or King County. And so if we can receive grants for things, which, you know, come on, we receive grants for roads and and public health and senior services and everything else that are good project. If we don't receive all those, we essentially go through the year with about half the budget. In King County gets the rest of our money. You're not going to get it back. So how do we provide the best service for our people? In my mind, is accepting as many grants as we can. Because then in turn, we are receiving the equivalent of, I believe, last time I checked, it was a dollar twenty-two in state grants for every dollar the taxpayers pay in state taxes. So that's a net benefit to the people of the county. Yes, you were taxed a dollar by the state, but if we received, if we didn't get grants, you would get nothing for your dollar. Where we get more grants, now you get a dollar twenty-two back for your dollar. So that, while I disagree with rent grants, that is the only way to keep the state and get your money back locally. Scott, thank you, sir, and I can't wait for you to show up. Sherry, that was kind of hard to understand. But I guess the only part that I can technically comment on or would comment on, as you said, that this, we do have the legal authority to stop the litigation battle on Under Canvas. And as you may or may not be aware of, I did make a motion to do just that and the motion failed. So we are where we are. With that, that's the end of my comment. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Mr. Anderson.
Thank you, Ms. Miles. I believe the appropriate person to talk to would be Karen or Carmen in the Sheriff's Department with regards to the dog shelter, the last update the sheriff gave. They should be coming before the board to give us an update of what their committee is looking for or looking at next month. So we've been waiting for that for a long time. Pat, could you please send me the link to that article in the Acoma Herald from 2013? You have my email address. And in terms of, yes, the, I agree with Commissioner Christopher. That change did occur. That change is also the change that the state has directed and now through legislation has required county assessors to use. And then has it affected our revenue? It has affected the tax shift. It has not necessarily affected the overall revenue the county receives. And then the solar power assessments, there was a change in that legislation that also made the depreciation schedule longer, so you didn't lose as much percentage each month. But again, the assessor is the proper person to talk to, especially with regards to pump storage. We are working at the state level with the Washington State Association of Counties to try to come up with legislation that will stop the tax shift. And we've had conversations at WASAC. And we're going to be making a plan as soon as this legislative session is over to get something prefiled for next legislative session. I think Commissioner Christopher responded to Jean. Tracy, I have a meeting with the Sheriff's Department later. I will talk with Karen. And I would actually love to read her thesis. I had not heard that, so that's a tidbit of information. I will say, we cannot push off the title fifteen requirement that is set in statute. We are required to adopt in March, even though they're still working on the legislative changes. As it comes to grants, I take a little bit of a different tact from Mr. Christopher. Grants are what keeps this county operating. Grants are what keeps many of the organizations within Clickatack County in business when we look at our conservation districts, when we look at our other partner agencies like, well, actually practically all of our partner agencies. It is grants that keeps the world going around. For every grant that we don't get locally, that is dollars that is not spent and the multiplier effect of money that is not created within Clickatack County. With that stated, I don't believe you should accept every grant. Because most grants that you do accept have conditions, and sometimes those conditions are not the best for the residents of Clickatack County. I would follow that if we didn't accept any grants, we wouldn't be able to continue to work on roads and build the roads that we get from our federal grants. Those are dollars that each of us spend in federal gas tax dollars that come back through those grants. That is how those dollars come back to us. And I would agree with Mr. Commissioner, with Commissioner Christopher, that the county is a net recipient in tax dollars. We get more tax dollars in this county than we actually spend. And you find, huh?
Certification helps get more grant dollars back.
The 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 amount of grant dollars we get within the county are greater than the amount of money that we spend on the sales tax and everything else that we get. Yes, almost all rural counties are net recipient. And it can, and and grant can also be, it's not just a grant, it can also be a direct appropriation from the legislature. It can be through the the programs that that we partner with the legislature. There's a lot more than just grants. And to Sherry, we are in litigation, so it's probably not right to respond to any anything.
Madam Chair, if I may, just for Commissioner Anderson, I wasn't. You, you said something that could have was incorrect and could have been used against you, so I was just trying to clarify your statement. I was helping.
No, I always like to clarify. And the last, very last thing, absolutely, public comment, we try to do our best to respond to public comment and to have that communication back and forth, even though the recommendations from the state and everyone else is that public comment is for you to comment rather than creating a dialogue. So we take that very seriously, and that is why we do our best. We have people that'll spend three days coming up with their three-minute public comment and expect a response, much like Pat's questions. I mean, it can be very nuanced and very directed, but we still want to respond in the best way possible. And then we're always willing, of course, to have off conversations to help people get to the answers to their questions.
Thank you. So Jean, WSU, we did have a lengthy conversation last week during session. And it was put to me to go ahead and reach out to WSU with our desires and our budgets. And so I did that, and I've heard back from them. So they are working through those preliminary contracts to bring forward to us. So I expect to see those soon. So WSU is moving well and we'll get those programs in place, and they're very valued by the people. So I'm thankful for WSU's help and their assistance with those programs. Sherry, I was the culprit of the flag. It's our same flag. We just moved it. I had a night meeting last week and we were here and someone facing us who is familiar with the regulations brought it up and showed it to me that legally, the American flag is to be, when you're facing it, to be the left of any other flags. So we went ahead and got up during that meeting and moved the flag. So we were thankful for that that help, but it's it's the same flag, just in a different place. So and it's kind of in the middle because you can't see it if we put it over in the other corner on Zoom. So we kind of placed it there. And thank you, Becky, for calling in with a positive alternative. We always appreciate positive alternatives and it will give the Sheriff's Department and the people on that committee something else to think about as they work through the process. That's all I have for today. Thank you. So. Consent agenda.
Madam Chair, we have a consent agenda with thirteen items. My motion is to approve.
I'll second.
Motion in a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Hearing none, consent agenda passes, and I did not ask for discussion. I assumed there was none. So if there is any, we'll have to. I'll have to correct my working order next time. Payroll.
Madam Chair, I move that we pay the accounts payable warrants in the amount of one hundred and twenty-three thousand, five hundred and six dollars and thirty-two cents in the payroll benefit warrants in the amount of one million, one hundred and ninety-six thousand, eight hundred and twenty-six dollars and sixty-eight cents for the date ending February twenty-six, twenty twenty-four.
Did you say one hundred and twenty-three thousand? Or one hundred and twenty-six thousand?
I said one hundred, well, just to clarify, in case I said something different, one hundred and twenty-six thousand, five hundred and six dollars and thirty-two cents.
Thank you.
Just wanted to make sure it was on the, I will second the motion.
Motion in a second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Aye. All those opposed? None. Payroll certificate and payment approvals passes. So department update with interim planning director Lori Anderson.
I don't see him online yet. I haven't scrolled down though. Okay.
Okay. It's okay to go ahead with Lori, then you're you're good. Okay.
I'm fine with moving ahead, even if you can't get on.
Needless to say, next week, Scott will be here, our new director, so I'll be supporting him fully as he's here giving this update. I'm very excited to have him coming. But in the meantime, planning goes on. And last week, we had our planning commission workshop with the critical areas review. And kind of our highlight, we we progress through chapter one. And now I'm doing a side-by-side comparison of our existing critical areas to our draft. Basically, the last half of chapter one. And then, since we needed to do that, they moved on to chapter two with definitions, and they got through most of the definitions. And we have a few edits to make there.
Can you remind me how many chapters are in that?
I think it's six altogether. I honestly can't remember. But but don't worry, I know, yes, I, we have a ways to go. But I think we are progressing and they all agreed chapter one's probably the hardest. Moving on, the request for proposals, as noted, we're waiting for the new director. The Wilson Monroe rezone proposal in the Snowden area. We'll wait till Scott gets here and we'll proceed with that. And do have kind of an update from the prosecutors, but we'll wait for Scott to, so we can move forward. The Rumble Lambert conditional use. The applicants will be withdrawing their current conditional use application. And then on Friday, when title twelve goes into effect, they'll apply under the new title twelve, which will allow them to basically not have to do a traffic study and save them thousands of dollars.
So they paid the full amount for title for the conditional use permit application, right? And they're going to rescind it just so they don't have to do this, and they're going to have to pay the full amount again?
They will.
Or is it a pro rationed amount?
Since that would probably be up to you. What I've told them is if they withdraw their current one, they would then need to reapply, excuse me, apply with the new conditional use application. And the current twenty twenty-four fees would be in effect. And the, our fee schedule did go up three percent from last year. So last year, CUP was nine hundred and sixty dollars, so now it's just a little over a thousand dollars. And
I guess I'm with Commissioner Anderson on this one. We charge the fee based on how many hours. I hate to use the worker hours, but we think the process is going to, sorry. We charge the fee based on how many worker hours we believe the CUP is going to take. So if we charge whatever, nine hundred and sixty dollars, and we think it's, say, ten hours to do the project, and they pull their application at hour two, I would think then we're charging them for eight hours of service they didn't get. So I'm kind of, this is where the prorated that Commissioner Anderson speaks of, that I don't know legally whether we can charge people for a service they didn't get. So I would be in favor of figuring out some kind of prorated for everybody going forward, not just these people. Or at least looking into that greater.
So, thank you, Commissioner Christopher. Yeah, I bring that up just as has has it went to, have we put any notices in the paper or any?
We've done, that we routed the SEPA as well as conditional use permit for comments. So SEPA would stay, and they wouldn't have to redo SEPA. The conditional use permit. And this, this is just going off of what I believe should happen. We would then need to route that, and it's a much shorter comment period. And then proceed into an actual public hearing before the Board of Adjustment. And as far as the fees, this is kind of a new thing. Our fees are based, we have like our base rate based on X number of hours for the, in this case, a conditional use permit, and I don't have all the documentation in front of me. So we've never had a case under our new fee schedule, at least, where somebody's withdrawn an application and then simultaneously reapplied. And I certainly won't make that determination, and I don't know if our new director would make that determination or if it would be more of a prosecutors to lead us down what's possible. I do know the applicants have said, whatever happens, they'd much rather reapply and basically pay the thousand dollars instead of six, seven thousand dollars for a traffic study. So.
But but in the end, though, the work that has been done by staff is still valid for the new application for the CUP. And if there was anything that, you know, we would have spent money on, like newspapers or all that, some of that doesn't need to be done because the SEPA is already done, right? We don't have some of that doesn't need to be done because the SEPA is already done, right? We don't have to go all the way through.
But they would pay a SEPA fee, or you know, when they apply for the conditional use and the SEPA is required, they pay the SEPA fee.
Separate.
Separate from the conditional use.
But so this is just the conditional use permit. And we have done some work on that.
Yes.
But that's still work that we can use on the new one.
Yes.
When they pull it and bring it back, you've already been working on it. That's part of that nine hundred dollars.
Right. So I, 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 I don't know the answer to.
And you don't know if, in your time here of what, what our current county policy procedure is for something like that, is charging again? Or is it, I mean, or do you really know? Or, I mean, because it's up to us to decide, but
Well.
Setting a precedent for everybody going forward.
Right. And years, many years ago, there was a rezone proposal south of town. And that did not go through. Then they came back and reapplied for a different type of rezone. But that's totally different. And they paid both times.
Yes, but if they're, if, I guess I'd say, I can understand it if they're changing the plan.
Right.
Because now you're starting from scratch again. You might have to even go back through SEPA because there's new information. You're, you're doing five RV spots instead of four. That could change the SEPA.
Correct.
But if the plan is the same.
So, yeah, because many times, you know, when you go through SEPA in the process, the applicant may withdraw to make changes and then resubmit, right? We have that, we've had that happen before. Or based on the, the direction of the responsible official, you know, they might say, please withdraw, make these changes, bring it, resubmit. I see this as, in essence, the same thing. And when we do that, we don't actually charge them again, do we?
I'm trying to think, because in the case you're talking about, I think the SEPA number would stay the same. You know, it would just be a new checklist, updated checklist or something. So this would actually be, right now, it's conditional use twenty twenty-three, I think eleven. When they submit a new one, it'll be assigned a twenty-four number. So I, I don't know the answer. Potentially, we could maybe ask like the building department because they probably have building permits that are submitted and withdrawn and then resubmitted if, if, how, you know. But somebody definitely other than me would need to make that determination.
I would encourage that we have a building, planning council discussions and figure out what we want to do going forward and, and set county policy to make sure everybody's the same way. And whether that's on a next Tuesday or a two Tuesdays from now or whatever, I don't think it's a very long discussion, but I think everybody should be around and give an idea before we turn it over to the prosecutor for legal opinion.
I believe in the past, somewhere visiting with the county, I have seen a department come forward and ask for a waiver. And then the commissioners have made a decision based off of what was happening to grant that. And it seems sound to me to move forward since some of the work's been completed and discount and apply that and move it forward. But I, I agree with Mr. Commissioner, or Mr. Christopher. Going forward, we do need to create a sound policy, a written policy that we can rely back to.
Right. So like, I could, I could see it being an issue, like so far, it's all been administrative work inside. If you had had a hearing or something, then you're going to have to pull it and then you're going to have to have another hearing. And then your change, your costs would change. But I, I think there's got to be a way in order that, you know, they pulled it just because we finally adopted Title twelve, that it would make, make sense. But there's always unintended consequences and we need to know those. And I think Public Works would probably be involved in that. We've got roads that are being built, you know, that were previous, you know, roads before the Title twelve update. So that might change some things. So there's, there's unintended consequences here. So I think maybe we've got a workshop next Thursday, don't we?
I said, I think there, there needs to be bigger, broader discussion, more thorough research. And you know what? If for some reason we decide that that's what we should do, then maybe we refund him for his original, their original purchase. But I, I don't want to, I don't necessarily want to make an executive decision where you could be making or setting policy going forward.
Yep. So workshop would include, what I'm hearing, planning, building and public works? Anyone else?
I would invite the prosecutor.
Okay. And Mr. Canow? And do we have time for next Thursday, our upcoming workshop? Okay.
So then in the meantime, they plan to.
They're going to have to pay between now and then.
I would pay and if
And pay in.
We would reimburse if we don't fix it. It, it's just what it is.
Sounds good. So Porta Clickatat with their development there in the Benjen area. They are, they have provided a response to the comments that were received on SEPA. And that is potentially moving forward to probably an April Planning Commission meeting. And once again, the James Dean Aggregate Resource Overlay and the Smith RV Park were kind of holding off, figuring out next steps forward and waiting for the new director. And then we still have our usual pending projects that hopefully Scott, the new director, will be able to to move some of these forward where we've had not a lot of action. But the light is at the end of the tunnel and it's going to be nice. And we'll be progressing. So that's the update that I have. And certainly if you have other questions, we'll try to answer them.
I do appreciate weekly updates.
Oh, well, thank you.
They've helped me keep in touch.
Any idea the phone number with its hand up for the last ten minutes? Oh, okay.
Yeah. Thank you.
Okay.
And we will see you again.
Oh, yeah.
You're not, you're not getting away. We know where you're at.
Thank you.
So miscellaneous reports and comments. Move to Mr. Magar from the Central and Eastern Clickatet Conservation District for a letter of support for a grant application. Are you online, Mr. Magar?
I am. Good morning, County Commissioners.
Thank you.
So what we're asking for today is on behalf of Eastern Clickatet Conservation District and landowners and grazers affected by the New Road Fire, is a letter of support for NRCS to fund deferred rest and deferment for grazing in, on almost thirty thousand acres of the fire. And this is really important for the re-establishment of grass stands and to reduce the amount of invasive species that move in or get spread around as we see these grounds get recovered. The, there were applications for rest and deferment from Eastern Clickatet County residents and also Spokane affected fires. And the way the NRCS ranking system worked out, all the funds ended up going to the Spokane fires. And so we're just working with NRCS and looking to voice community and local support for NRCS to seek out funds to fund the eleven applicants that would cover, again, almost thirty thousand acres of rest and deferment for up to two years on about half of the, the New Road Fire. And so I'm working with our NRCS partners. We've determined that they need to just see that, that local support. So I've reached out to County Commissioners, Local Catlins Association, the Conservation Districts and the Washington Wheat Growers, as well as Congressman Newhouse's office to garner those letters of support to help our NRCS partners seek out the funding to provide that, that restoration resource.
Great, thank you. Any questions?
I don't have any questions other than to thank Lauren for his hard work on this.
And Lauren, you sent a draft letter of support to the B O C C, correct?
I did provide a draft letter of support, yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Lauren.
That helps. It sounds like we're all in agreement. And thank you for your good work, Lauren.
Yeah, you bet. If, once you get that signed, if you could just route that back to me and I'll work it through the channels at NRCS and we'll see if we can bring some of those federal dollars into Clickatet County to help with the fire restoration.
Will do. And then anything else we can help with? A lot of snow.
Okay, thank you all.
Thank you. So.
Is that letter for us? Do we need to make a motion to sign or just sign if we want to sign?
I think we've got consensus.
Yes.
I would. I don't know that we necessarily need the motion, but.
Yeah.
I just didn't know if it was here in front of us somewhere.
New agenda pack? This one?
If it's in there, we'll just sign it as we go through, right?
It's in there, it's in there.
Commissioner, Madam Chair, we have before us the reappointment to the Clickatet Skamania Developmental Disabilities Advisory Board and application from Catherine Corson. My motion would be to approve.
I will happily second and thank her for her service.
So motion in a second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Hearing none? Thank you very much for your service to the Clickatet Skamania Development Disability Board and Advisory Board. But thank you. We appreciate our volunteers. So department update with Jeff Hunter. We have a few minutes. Is there anything the commissioners would like to add or have a discussion on?
I can just give a little bit of an update. I can't go into specific details because we're in the time of protest. But the Hood River White Salmon Bridge Authority has chosen QIT to be the design build contractor, which is a huge step forward now that we've got them on board to start the next section of that. And then we agreed to an eight million dollar expense on that section of the contract, which will get the final design going. And that we also had the first meeting of the a special committee requiring, required by NEPA as far as the aesthetics. So we've got that up. It's a thirty-person committee. So if you can imagine wrangling all those cats, it's going to be a long period. But we're moving forward at an exceedingly quick pace.
I, I got a question. I heard a rumor that pedestrian walking lane is like ten feet wide. Is that, is there any truth to that?
No, it's currently designed to be twelve foot wide. And that is, but you have to think the new requirements require you to keep pedestrians and bicycles separate. You can't have them on the same area, especially with all the e-bikes that can go thirty.
Divider down the middle or something?
They'll, at the very minimum, be lines on the ground or something, you know, kind of like how you have on the side of the road in Portland with the green.
Green lanes.
Yep, something like that, which we've, we're already hearing that the twelve feet isn't quite wide enough for the two bike lanes and the pedestrian.
Or the two bikes that are going to use it.
You'd be surprised. There's a lot.
I think there'll be quite a few bikes. I just don't see people walking.
Oh, yeah.
Maybe a Sunday stroll.
Yeah, a lot of, a lot of that. But those e-bikes are getting to the point.
Getting on the bridge. Is there some spiral ramp to get up? Isn't the walking lane in the middle? On one side or the other?
No, no, it's on the, the, the western side.
Okay, okay.
Yeah.
So they're not going to have to try to get between lanes? Okay.
No, no. And so it's got, it's got the white pedestrian walking and then it's got little bump outs with seats and stuff. If you want to go sit down as you're walking across.
Going to be chain length or anything, the prohibit jumpers or?
That is.
All the new don't jump from bridge signs going on in the legislature.
Part of the discussion with the aesthetics committee is what all those walls and everything looks like. But the, there will be an actual separation, physical separation between the cars and the bike bedside. So there will be a separation there, whether they're Jersey barriers or whatever. But don't ask how much the, just the concrete cost for that twelve foot wide.
Oh, I'm, I'm well aware. Like I said, I'm, I'm, I'm curious what we do with the aesthetics when they start looking at the new state regulation for preventing jumping. How you, you battle aesthetics and that all at the same time.
Yeah. Oh, it's going to do a lot of discussion to be had. I'm glad I'm not on that part of the board.
So we have allotted ten minutes for Heather. If we don't have any other updates for ourselves. Heather, would you like to go before Jeff this morning? You're here early. We appreciate it. Thank you. Yeah. Good for you for doing this here.
All right. So we just certified the first five elections this year. This one had six school levies, two for Prosser. And we have fifty-three voters in the Prosser School District. One for Goldendale, one for Centerville, one for Roosevelt and one for Glenwood. All of them passed. We are underway with our second election. The presidential primary ballots went out last Wednesday. That election is March twelfth and will be certified March twenty-second. And before that one is finished, we will start our third election, which is the April election. It'll have the Bickleton School Levy on it. And we will do that one entirely in-house. We have two hundred and fifty-two voters in the Bickleton School District. And we will conduct it on behalf of the twenty-one Yakima County voters who are also in the Bickleton School District.
How come they didn't piggyback on everybody else's school election? Would that not have saved them any money?
It would have. It would have. But they missed it. So they're all by themselves in April.
Unfortunately.
Yeah.
How, yeah. So with that, are we able to cover our costs with what we charge them when they miss it? Or is it counting, costing the county extra dollars?
No, they pay for the entire election. They bill everything out.
Hours and everything.
Hours.
Plus benefits, everything.
Yes.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
You're welcome. Anything else? Need me to talk for a few more minutes till Jeff gets here?
Yeah.
I thought you were going to do the robot there. You can do that till ten minutes.
I appreciate it. I got to be involved in the canvassing board.
You get lots of opportunity this year.
Yeah, I will. I'll be very skilled.
Training.
Yes.
That's, that's interesting stuff right there. When you sit down and you start signature trainings online.
Some interesting dynamics of what ballots came in, how people need to be careful.
And no election is the same. So the canvassing board for the presidential primary will be different and.
Okay.
I guess to open a can of worms, which I don't want to open, but we're talking about elections. And so going back to the decision on the coroner, I had a conversation with prosecuting attorney and he'd stated that he'd contacted some of, and I'm not speaking for him, but he, he let me know that he'd contacted some of his peers throughout the state. And they all agreed that we could run the election this year for, starting on January. I know kind of where we've been feeling on this and our preference would be to run the election this year. And then we don't have to worry about anything, creating a department and then switching the department over within two years or making an appointment on January one. How, what would be the right way for, because I don't, try not to create any issues between other electeds, including us. But we're all three involved in it to find a way through the end of this.
Either an AG opinion that states that or an opinion from the Superior Court of Clickatet County. And like I said last time, I won't take it personally. If he takes it to the judge to make a determination, that's he's just doing his job. I'm just doing mine. So.
I, I read the opinions. It seems that if everybody's reading the, the law as written, they're probably going to come to the same conclusion. And I can't imagine that this might be a good idea to bring up to the legislature when you're up there. And I can't imagine that this might be a good idea to bring up to the legislature when you're up there. Uh, at least drop the bomb, send it to Paul Jewell before you go up this week. Uh, because we can't be the only ones dealing with this. And if it says in RCW, there will be no position. How can you elect a position that there's no position? So the legislature might be able to fix this problem with the stroke of a pen.
I did discuss the fact that the legislature, in all of their wisdom, took out any timeline for plate, for filling that position and creating that position like they had in the old RCW.
Right, that's what I'm saying. If they amend it where we can put it on the ballot beforehand, I mean, it, you, you'd think it'd be a slam dunk and they'd all vote for it. Uh, so it might be something that they might be able to squeeze in and get done this legislative session if it's brought up to them. Other than that, we're playing in court.
I, I did, I did bring it up to the, one of our representatives and she didn't think it would be able to get on this session, but she was amenable to helping.
Yeah, there's, there's nothing you can do this session. You know, we're at the last week. You can't, unless it has a, you know, financial impact on the state, there's nothing they can do to add to it.
Tom.
But I will, I do plan on having a discussion with the, the WAC members that are up there about how they're handling it as well. Okay. Just needed to burn the time, so there you go.
There we go.
Well, thank you.
Alrighty, you're welcome.
Thank you, Heather.
You can take the elevator down if you want.
Going down's easy. Now we are waiting for Mr. Mr. Hunter from Public Works.
Casey here if you may.
Yeah, Casey, do you have something? I see you smiling, so.
I, I, for a year, I told her to wave her hand in the back to get our attention. She still won't do it.
Smiles. That's an indicator.
I am just requesting verbal to post for the office manager position within the Natural Resources Economic Development Department. It is now vacant, and so we're looking to post.
Are, are we all in agreement that we wanted as an office manager or potential office administrative assistant?
So right now it's an office manager one or two, and the idea was to possibly post for just the office manager one.
Okay.
Go from there.
Yeah, I, I, I believe it should be an office manager in there uh with a new department, new staff. Um, I want someone that can, that can deal with budget with all the various little sub-departments in there uh and not just the phones area. So, yeah, manager for me.
Mr. Anderson?
Fine, was it being advertised at one?
You guys have talked it through, so I'm good with it. Thank you. Thank you. So Mr. Hunter, Public Works.
Look at that timing.
Yeah. Always.
I still miss when him and Gordy had to run down the street to make it. Come in huffing and puffing. You like the new building or the old building better? You probably liked your privacy in the old building better. Probably get more done without being bothered as much down there.
Kind of. We don't get too much down here.
Tracy's a good geek.
She is, very good geeky. Am I ready?
Good morning.
Good morning. Okay, we had three things on. We have no uh, no pay estimates today, so um I will apologize. I didn't hear the consent agenda. I would assume it got approved. Thank you. Okay, we'll move right into the.
I, I do have a question, sorry, on your consent agenda. Um, you're looking at purchasing four new trucks and those trucks will probably come in this year and go in service when next year. What do you have any kind of timeline on when you might be disposing of old trucks? That's where I'm coming from.
Um, we're, right now, we don't know. We're, that's why we're going out to bid, because if we go off the state, they're not taking bids until the third quarter. They won't even put them on until the third. And that's saying they do put them on. So it depends on what the delivery will be. Somebody has them sitting in their lot, then we could get delivery. If not, I'm gonna guess we're gonna be close to the year next year. You're pretty close. It doesn't take us long to put them in service, though. Not those pickups. Some of the other ones, it takes a little longer. It's gotta fit them with plows and all that, but not those. So um we'll probably, yeah, I think we can do, we'll do it by the end of this year if we'll know when we open bids.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, um, let's see. So crushing. Um, they're getting ready to drill and blast. Are they drilled? They're gonna blast today between five or two and five in the Matson Quarry, which is on the east side of the county. Um, let's see, design. Um, Sunday I went out to advertisement today and uh we're still working on the other projects as they develop the federally funded projects. On the east end, we're cleaning ditch. We're cleaning up a couple slides. I mean, the roads are open. We're just cleaning the ditches out now. Um, we're gonna grade Bickleton where we can and we're brushing. As it dries up in Bickleton, we'll be able to grade. On the west end, uh we're brushing, patching holes, cleaning culverts and fixing some guard rail damage. Upcoming facilities, we still have a couple punch list items on the jail roof. Um, Superior Court, we have two more contracts that should go out to bid. That's the last of our contracts, but small works. And then the work is scheduled to start April fifth. Um, events at the fairgrounds, we have a, that are scheduled and that we went through. We have the Fire on the Mountain event uh scheduled for the third week in March. Fuel Island, we're still working on that. Our consultant is, we're hoping to hear back. Auditor's voting area, work is ongoing. Project scheduled to be complete by the end of March. Um, HVAC bids, contract, courthouse contract is out to bid. Um, store damage, we're finishing painting. We will be um, once we get all our stuff in, then we will be bringing that to the board to let you know what the costs were for that event. Uh, jail Sally Port door has been installed and is now working and the project is complete. The washer installation in the jail is scheduled for March fifth. Radio site, camera's still not working. They say a couple weeks. Oh, yeah, we have some follow-up issues. There are a few things. Um, city water bill. Commissioner Zoller and I met with the city yesterday to discuss the water bill. And uh, could turn it over to you or I could?
Go right ahead.
Okay, um, you know, Mr. Zoller came back, but we don't, you know, we wanna pay nothing. But sure, I get, that's good, that was a good starting point. City said, no, we'll meet you halfway. We'll do three. Three years as opposed to, and they said we'll do payments. They would accept payments, a payment plan, which um the only thing we didn't, that is now that I think about it, which we would base it on what their rates were for those years, not what their rates are today. The difference of that would be. So if I remember, I think it's right around forty-four thousand dollars versus ninety-five or nine, ninety-three thousand dollars.
And was that the difference in the math that we talked about yesterday was the rate difference? Okay, that answers that question for me.
And did you agree to the three year?
No, I said I have, I'm a Bo- B O C C of three. We'd come back and have this discussion. And they understood and we'll wait for our return.
How do you feel, Commissioner Christopher?
You're on that and more, so. I, I guess I look at it as we use the service. Um, that service because we were not paying for it, got diverted, just like the solar tax diversion to the public. Their rates probably went higher because we weren't paying ours. Um, I find it unfortunate and I still think we need to pay the full bill, but that's just me.
Any comments, Mr. Anderson?
How did you feel about the three years? I mean, you started at zero.
Um, you know, I think in our conversations, there were a lot more factors than just that simple look of we used it and paid it. They had a lot of other things they had factored in and they came to the table prepared to mitigate. Uh, they were amenable and uh wanted to come and be a partner with the county going forward and felt like they could give and be reasonable and understand our budget constraint and the surprise when we got a new bill. Uh, and we had been paying the rates, religiously been paying our rates and paying our fair share that we were asked for. It was just a slip on several parts that that wasn't caught in the difference in the meters. Uh, so, so I felt good that they were being friendly and, and came to the table with that. Um, I do believe it's happened with other entities in the past and they legally can charge back. That was a question for me. I'm amenable to uh what they've offered.
Okay. Did you have any conversation about um other things?
Yes, 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 we did.
About what?
Uh, about other contracts from the past uh going forward with the different services provided by the county for the city. We factored those, those uh negotiations in there about what had happened. Uh, one of the things that they brought to light was there are contracts and there are moving parts to those uh services. With this one, it's a little bit of a, a loss everywhere because no one can find the original contract for what we agreed to, what we agreed to pay for on their side or our side. We cannot find that original.
You're talking about the water?
For the water.
So there might be, it have been something. I mean, it's hard to believe that they wouldn't notice the difference in the pipe sizes and.
And we had those conversations.
A lot of those things were handshake agreements back in the day, a long time ago, and if it wasn't written down or we can't find it, so it is what it is.
It is what it is, and it was kind of a folly on both sides. So going forward, we'll clean it up and make it professional and know where we're charged and what we're charged in the future.
And I would suggest, whatever the board decides, that we'll draft something up and send it to them. So in case uh Pat leaves or, you know, you get a new elected body or something like that, they don't come back again and go, well, wait a second, you know, we only got three years. We could get six.
Right. Well, and along with that, do we need to consider, if we don't have a contract on file, do we need to consider creating a contract now for our relationship with them?
We pay what the bill is.
Yeah, it's like having a contract with a P U D over a power bill.
I mean, the only, the only difference is as if the, the size of the meter in there is oversized and it doesn't need to be that size, then we could create a contract in which we pay based on what we actually need, based on an engineer's analysis. That would be a contract in which I would see, so that that's something that they can hand to the state to say, actually, we have, just because we have a four-inch meter, we're only using two or three inches of water, but we're not gonna make the, the county pull all that pipe out to put the right-sized meter in. What we're actually saying is, cause there's multiple ways that you can, you can um set that up for water. But because it comes to the capacity analysis for them, sorry.
Right, and that's my question is technically, if we're trying to set it up so that we don't have to pay for a four-inch meter going forward, that four-inch meter is affecting, correct me if I'm wrong, how many hookups the city gets? So there might be ten or twelve residents and they're down to like forty or some crazy number of hookups left. So that meter might be costing ten housing developer, houses being developed or whatever that number in exchange for us running an oversized meter. That's a consequence we're giving to the city and now we're giving them a consequence and saying, oh, by the way, and we don't even wanna pay for all of it.
Well, and I think there was conversation.
But you, you're not required in your capacity now. So that's why I said we could have the co- a contract in place, which would give them back that capacity, just because it's the meters oversized. I mean, like, kinda like down in um at the airport, that meter's oversized because they were running fire flow through it too, which you're not supposed to run fire flow through a meter. And so there's a lot of, uh, you know, there's a lot of ways that the Department of Health allows them to not take into consideration just the meter size. That's like a base.
Hookups back out of it. I'm fine with that.
Yeah, and we had those conversations yesterday.
Yeah, the problem and I don't disagree with it to a certain extent, but but the problem with that, though, is, is you still have the capacity to use four inches, because you have a four-inch meter and four-inch lines running into the building. You could get a new director and a new mayor that could come back and try to back charge us for that later on. That's the problem. You could get the agreement in place and okay, they'll say, fine, but we could end up right back to where we are again. Granted, we've saved some money, but did we really? Cause you know, or did we? The city's already given us something they look at, because when we had the water break there, that was on the fire flow side of the line. Well, they don't charge for that, and so they just eat that water usage because the fire flow's not charged. Eventually, we will have to, and we're pushing our max with a three-inch meter. That's why they put a four-inch meter in, because with all the hookups, with the wa- with the washer and, you know, the services they have in the jail, that's what drives that meter. It's not the courthouse. Courthouse has a two-inch line off of that. But to take a two-inch, that's why they would probably wouldn't have done it. To take a two-inch line off of a three-inch main feed, you've taken quite a bit of your capacity through from the three-inch. So do we necessarily need it? No, but during peak hour, during peak times, you would use all four inches of water, the majority.
And they were comfortable with that yesterday. They were comfortable with leaving it that way and understood.
Well, I've worked for other ci- I worked for another city and they would frankly just not do it, bottom line. They'd say, you have a four-inch meter, you change out your pipes, you change out your meter, then we'll bill you for a three-inch. They haven't taken that role, but like Pat said, they could take that. The next guy coming in could easily say, the next person could say that, or council could say.
But if you have an agreement in place, then you wouldn't be in that jeopardy of six years back and all that.
True. True.
I thought move, moving forward with, you did the negotiation. I respect your negotiation.
So next, uh, Mr. Christopher.
I just wanna clarify that there is consensus for two people to move forward with the half paying half agreement.
And for the record, though, when we had this issue with the um natural gas, the private company, we didn't have to pay any, right?
That's correct. That's correct.
Okay. As most companies do when it's a mistake on their part.
Yes. We had it in a couple instances, but I don't, I'll let Commissioner Zoller fill you in on that or how she chooses to do that, because there's other things that play into this besides
Yes.
the water.
There was, and, and we had, we had great conversations.
Which was?
We're gonna have good conversations moving forward. Uh, we talked about the other contracts with the city, with the courts and the probation and different things and different services that we share and provide for each other and just our path going forward as good partners. And, and we're all on the same page. Um, my question is now going forward, Jeff, do you have discussions then uh with finance and how we go forward with?
We'll have discussions with, I'll have discussions with Pat.
Okay.
And uh, we will probably calculate our, what we suggest our payment rate to be.
Okay, thank you.
And then, of course, you know, the board has the final say naturally.
And just so that I'm clear, after the discussion we had after my question, do you anticipate we will be crafting a document for the future for agreement? Okay.
Yes, well, for this piece of it, so.
Right, so I'll look forward to that.
Yes, we'll, we'll be working on that.
Okay.
And yeah, we'll look at our, what we think we can afford to pay. Okay, so a few other things on the list. Um, kinda briefly heard a little of the conversation with Lori and then talked to Lori, kinda given her, and again, this is a board's decision. Um, Lori Anderson, sorry, I'm getting the Lorie's confused. Um. Lori Anderson about the planning consultant. Um, the process was done, which is fine. Uh, so that kinda to certain degree, to keep credibility. You end up with, the new planning director ends up with essentially three choices. He can choose, there were only two people that applied. There were only two consultants that the group based there. Um. And so they have a choice. He can either choose the, the one that, that the group chose. He can choose both of them. Or he can choose neither one and then go back out to add. But anything outside of that, you start, you know, now you open up your whole process for. Uh, comments and notices, parity, because it takes the firm, it costs the firms money to put those things together. Not that they'll probably ever challenge you. But they could technically do that. So I'm just kinda giving you the heads up, we're fine waiting. We could, you know, we could start working and we will work with him to process. If he wants to use them, again, keeping in mind, you, even though he signs a contract, we do these all the time, it's an on-call contract. You don't have to use them if they're under contract. You only use them when you need them. It's not like you're paying them a monthly fee just to be there.
Do you know, do you know the names of the two off the top of your head?
Um, one is uh, D G G or the Water Group. That was not the one selected. The other one was. I don't, they're, they're a firm out of band. They're a bigger firm out of band.
And the other one is the watershed.
Yes.
Well, and um. Just to be comfortable with the processes, Jeff was, Jeff gave me a one-on-one yesterday. And I was really pleased with the process that you put together a diverse board to look at those applications and. And vet what would be the most professional or what offered the services that we were looking for. So that made me very comfortable that it had had a broader look already.
Yeah, they're based on a, a point system. There are certain questions that they have to answer and they're based on, they're given a point system from one to ten.
Who was on that advisory board?
Couple people from Public Works, three people from Public Works, or four people from Public Works and Lori. So different people that, and they're basing it just on what that says. So they have no outside information or working with either of the consultants.
I had concerns to ensure that we picked the right person for the planner before I got here. Uh, but what was explained to me that they have been vetted in the way it was done and the things that they ask. I'm very comfortable with the top one that, that rose to the top for this position and. I'm also comfortable that they're on call. And so in the future, if he finds that he does need the help from the con- consultant, then he has somebody qualified that's. Everybody's had a second look at him to make sure that they'll serve the need of the planning department that we're interested in. Um, my last concern I have is that we get it up and running. He's coming next week. Um, C P A is a new process for this planner, he's coming from Oregon. So to have somewhere to call and ask those questions, um, I think it's important for him to have that, but I don't know how. I think there's a little bit of a process yet toward what we're doing.
Yeah, it's, it's a whole negotiated process then, because on professional contracts like that, you cannot take bids. You have to do an R F P, which is minus the dollars and then you negotiate.
Negotiate the dollars.
So there's that whole process again, get started. They have to fill out the um. But again, I'm looking for the, or do they want us to send a letter? Do we wanna wait for Scott that basically says you're been the ones that are awarded? Now you have to go through, fill out the scope of work, fill out, you know, the um, the contract.
I, I, for myself, I, I guess I'm a sooner rather than later. Um. I would agree with the, the pick. Um, and I believe if we advise you to move forward. Um. That helps the planner know our confidence level in the pick and can get us moving a week sooner than waiting a week.
Um, it would be great to, to talk to Scott about it, um, about, you know, I'm. Starting that process, a lot of this comes down to the scope of work, uh, which we have not had a conversation with our new. Planning director about, and so I have no problem waiting a, a week to have that conversation uh, with Scott to find out, you know. He's been doing his research and looking at, you know, how he wants to manage his office. I don't wanna jump in front of that, knowing that uh. A week's different isn't gonna make a difference, but I wanna start out on that note that this is his choice.
I don't, I don't disagree that. What, if we start the process, it's not like it's gonna be final and ready for him to sign next week and he doesn't get any input. He's gonna have input, it just allows the company to start working on what they believe they need to present. For dollar numbers and then Scott's gonna look at that and go, well, you need to add this, this and this and this. It just gives us a week's head start. Uh, nothing's final, he can change it all, he can throw it all out. It just gives us a week's head start. I don't wanna circumvent or take anything away from him.
So I would give you a voice of two then, that I would like to start the process. Fully knowing Scott can be way in on the scope of work and everything is gonna be up to him.
So what I'll do is I'll walk Lori through and what she'll do is reach out to the consultant. We have a form letter that says that you, we won't send the other one out. That gives him an opportunity, still. It keeps one of his options open. He'll still be able to say, if he wants the water people, he'll still be able to say, we're gonna award to you also.
Okay.
But at that point, she can at least reach out to those people and tell them. That yes, you've been selected. Now we have to work through the process. And that's where, that's, and that process does take a while to do. It's forming the scope. I mean, okay, to give you a ballpark, we're still working out with our consultant for the airport on their contract. And we awarded two or three weeks ago, so it, it's, it's a process to get to where you wanna do. We do it a lot more, so there's certain things that we can do to save money that we like to do, so. Okay, I will move on real quick. Uh, these are more of cost stuff. And this is just, um, as we were doing, finishing, we bound a bunch of the Title twelve books. Now where I came from, because so much effort went into this. And I will talk to the P A, I don't know if we can do this, but we used to do it where I came from. We sold our standards, the bound book. And they would get either a thumb drive or a C D with it. And um, we looked at the cost that goes into doing that, it's right around a hundred dollars a book. They're, they're thick books. Um, we would give it to the people that have been part of the committee. That's the only fair thing to do. I wouldn't charge them for one copy. But we used to sell them quite regularly. Um, and I'm, I don't know, people, keep it in mind, they could still download them from the internet, because they're on our website. So they still have the ability to do that. But. If they come in and they're like, okay, I'm, I want all, I want that stuff for free, because I'm gonna require a public records request. Uh, I'm not saying this is a way to circumvent that, I'm saying this is a way to get some of our money back. And again, I will talk to the P A about this. But I wanna know if the board's on. I'm.
A hundred dollars a book seems like a lot. I know I regret you giving me all that paper, all those times, every time you redlined it, if it was a hundred dollars for that many pages to be printed up.
Well, you didn't get a, you didn't get a, a zip drive either though.
But fifteen, fifteen cents per page by public records standards.
But we also weren't including a thumb drive for you.
I mean, why would we include a thumb drive if we're giving you a paper copy or you can just go online and download it?
Cause it gives them the ability for a thumb drive, then they take those standards out, drop them in their plans. It's in PDF form, but then they can literally, when they're creating a, a set of plans, it gives them the ability to grab one of those plans and drop it in their set of. It's one of our standard.
But you can just download it off.
You could do it exactly, exactly. You could do, yes. So it's still, they still have that ability.
So I guess my point is, if you go charge a hundred dollars for these, how many of these you think you're gonna sell?
I don't know if we'll sell any.
Uh, three? Is it worth the hassle? It's kinda where I come in.
Well, again, I was just proposing that because we could, at the same time, we could have people asking for these copies. And I, I wanna copy, I wanna copy, I wanna copy. Then, the next thing you know, you're handing out a lot of free copies. Again, where, and it, a hundred dollars is fairly reasonable. It's different. On the west side, we were charging, this was before I left there, we charged a hundred and fifty dollars a set. And we still had them on the website and they were selling. They could bear, I mean, we constantly sold. I don't think we'll have that here, cause development's not the same. But again, I'm fine with not start selling for anything. That's, I'm, I'm fine giving them away too. It's just up to the board.
At fifteen, how many pages was it? Do we know how much? Right, is it, is what we can charge?
We just don't know how many pages, I can't, I don't have the book in here.
It's about a hundred and fifty pages.
Okay, so that's roughly twenty-two fifty.
I mean, we can reduce the cost too, I just.
Yeah, as I, I can, I, I.
Twenty-two fifty.
Twenty-two fifty does not seem outrageous to me. Uh, hundred just kinda seems like we're price gouging. I don't know, it just, it doesn't sit well in my gut. Um. I mean, I, I kinda understand there needs to be a charge, it's taxpayer dollars and. And people receiving the product or the service should pay for the product or the service, but not. In excess, and I don't wanna feel like I'm putting a price on there that's. Hindering, sure, a developer's gonna take it, because he uses it constantly, but I don't wanna be looked at that I'm trying to keep the public from seeing a document. Because I'm trying to overcharge them to get the document. So it's like, that's, that's kinda where I'm at, the, you know, the public records request dollar amount. Based on how many pages, twenty-two fifty, twenty-five, whatever, seems okay. Ethical to me, everything more just doesn't, just doesn't sit well with me.
And I'm, you know, honestly, I'd be fine with that, sir. Um, I just don't wanna do public records requests. Every stinking time, somebody wants. A Title twelve, because the, the public records request costs us a heck of a lot more time and effort than just copying.
Well, that's why, I, whatever the dollar amount is for the public records requests, I'd like to make this three dollars less. So if you wanna be a public record, it's gonna cost you more. You see what I'm saying? If you charge a hundred, they can get it cheaper via public records request.
If you're including the. Flash drive.
Yeah, we.
Add, add the price.
We don't, don't.
But like you say, they would be separate, yeah.
How much is the flash drive now?
Seven fifty, eight bucks a piece.
And they can choose the flash drive or not?
Yeah, typically you bind them together and give them both. Cause that way people want them, they usually want them so they can do something with them and they like both versions.
Right, but there might be people that just want a paper copy or want a flash. I, I would, I, I would be a separate, I'm fine if you wanna do both.
No, I'm.
Where I write is separate.
I'm would, I would do the twenty-two fifty um, for it and we'll eat the binding. And then if somebody does a public records request, you just.
Charge it for the binding.
Charge them the twenty-two fifty and hand it to them.
Yeah, well, that's what we could do, cause you can't charge them for the binding.
Or, and then you can.
We wouldn't bind them.
Yeah, you wouldn't bind them, but you wouldn't also make, if you've got available books, you just hand it to them or you can direct them to the website where it's on there for free.
And a charge for the flash drive, because if a lot of contractors need that.
But what's the public records request on the flash drives? The actual cost, so then you charge the actual cost on.
Okay. Okay, a couple other uh, financial things, we'll make these fairly quick. Um, we've been approached by uh. CPS, which, which is a state agency, it's Child Protective Services. To rent space from us at Pioneer Center.
Or.
Child Protective Services.
Just an office for themselves?
Well, we're gonna find out.
Space do we have?
Well, I was thinking, you know, we needed it when we were training, but Kim is since retired, we're not training, we have our new, we have our new person. So my thought is, is we may be able to work out renting that space that Hannah had used, because we didn't use it for how many years?
I thought we had. When we asked Hannah to.
We, we did, yes, because Public Works needed that space to train. Now we're down to one person in Pioneer Center now, because we've had retirements and things have changed.
Right, but that space was. Kind of, I'd say the, the backup conference room for anybody that needed it to have a meeting to whatever, and if we give it away.
We wouldn't be giving it away, we'd be renting.
Renting it, we no longer have that available meeting space.
And I think.
Just throwing it out there, because we were looking for ways to bring money.
Well, and the next person might too, and.
Yeah.
I don't know that I wanna be in the uh, that close a proximity to the state.
Just a suggestion too, that old D S H S building is empty across from Woodson Elementary. And that bothers me.
Right.
It's a valuable building that the state owns. That nothing is happening.
Yeah, I don't know what they're.
I wonder if CPS has reached out to them.
I don't know. They reached out to us, I don't know, you know. But again, I'm just floating it out there, because we were trying to look at ways to, you know, offset some of costs. You know, either bring money in or reduce costs.
On that one, I, I guess I look at future growth for the county too. If you start running it out. And then three years from now, you need that office space or two years and you gotta kick them out, you, you just caused a public outrage that's gonna come in here screaming, because now we hate children. Um, there's gonna be something. So it's just, I, I'm gonna have to be a no.
Isn't CPS buildings also require um, the level of security like the um.
Privacy glass and everything else?
Well, you, whatever it is, the federal office down there where Lauren's at.
Essentially.
Yeah, they've got that whole security that we might have to redo.
Well, yeah, if we had to do that, it wouldn't be worth, it wouldn't be worth it to us. We've just, you know, if it, I just wanted to bring it up before we went into further discussions. If the board was no, then it's simple, we just won't do it.
And we also have the, the discussions, the, the S B D C officer needed a, a lockable space down there too, you know, there was a lot of different.
Okay.
For that.
For our own.
That's fine.
Yeah, but maybe if you could suggest in that D S H S building, cause I know it's security, it has separate rooms, it has the glass.
Okay.
Because of what was in there already.
Okay, uh, one other thing, and this is more of a heads up. Um, yeah, we will bring, this last cold snap cost us quite a bit in increased um. Electric charges and quite a bit in gas charges. We are, for instance, uh, courthouse, January one was a thousand dollars more than it was last year. Um. For uh, that was actually the electric bill was a thousand dollars. The gas bill was two thousand or twenty-two hundred dollars. Than it was last year. So, and in February, it was about six hundred dollars. Um, this building. Um, Avista was eighteen hundred dollars. For February, five, six hundred dollars. P U D was seven something. Um, Pioneer Center. Was actually not as bad, it was about a break even there. What we found with the uh, um, so where we're going with this is, is we have turned. We made an adjustment again in our times. To, right now at the courthouse, we started from um, seven to five thirty, so systems go down at five thirty, the heat. Um, here, we're gonna do that also. We're also going to uh. We're also gonna look at in the next couple of weeks, when it starts warming up, we're gonna keep the heat, we're gonna kick the heat down. We have to do something, or I'm gonna come back and ask for more money, cause I just don't, we don't have it. I mean, we just don't. Um, where we did see that is, we did a, we did a collection. And I'm not, we're past that point, so I'm not pushing this right now, but I'm just letting the board know. We did an inventory to see how many space heaters there were out there. There's fifty of them between the three buildings. Or actually between those buildings and we actually have a. Or actually between those buildings and we actually have a few dispatched. That's so when people ask why our electric bill went up because we have gas heat, there's the answer.
But is it more cost effective to raise the temperature back up, the gas heat and unplug the space heaters?
But we don't get that, we get both.
I I do know there are some parts of the old courthouse that I don't care what you have the heaters set to, they are fifty five degrees in.
You are correct, that is a very, that is a problem, anything that any of the offices that face the outside walls, there's no insulation, those are brick walls. Yes, you are a hundred percent correct, that is a problem. Um, we will turn the heat down whilst the building, as it warms up though, because what ends up happening is is let's say the heat's set at to come on at, the building goes down to seventy degrees. Well, the temperature may be seventy, the sun coming in, next thing you know, it's feels like it's a hundred degrees outside or inside the building. And then people that more that run more warmer than other people will have the windows open in this building. But anyway, we're just kind of giving you the heads up.
What about during these cold snaps, asking all, I mean, we've got a building full of glass and does it help if, you know, everybody shuts their window shades, especially if we're gonna be closed for a day because of the snow to save some of that, and then if we're gonna be closed, that we don't heat it back up? Uh, and you know, there's the cost of heating it back up, but still, that's a lot of glass, that's thermal a lot going on.
That is true, we are looking at, that is a good, that is a good thought, we are looking at that to do um, actually uh institute something like that.
Okay.
That, or people close their blinds when they leave at night. That would help, yes. I was kind of giving you the heads up, I wanna keep moving through some of these, so I'm sorry, I took up way more of my time than I need than than I probably should have. Okay, one other thing that uh that has come up, um.
Should we have the other commissioner?
Yeah, we better, we.
Maybe end the side conversation and somebody can holler at her and tell her that.
Thank you, sir. Okay, we had one more thing and then we'll move on. So, um starting to get a little nervous about the clarifier. Um, because not, not that the one we were, there's two of them. The second one is a case something happens to the first. But the second one won't hold out very without, and you're probably nine months out or so if you start on the project today, maybe a little quicker. Um, so after I talked to PUD, we looked at our financing. We have the two hundred and fifty to thousand from, we got from the landfill gas fund. Um, the other option would be that we used fund balance, not, we're not coming to the board to ask for more money. There is, there is some fund balance in the account to pay the other two fifty so that that project could get started. Uh, so, just looking for.
I would add there's a third option. Uh, and that's on nine dollars. I know this board won't do it, but there is a third option.
Okay.
For me, um, this is a conversation I thought we would have had a long time ago. It's even before coming into the position, I knew upgrades and things need to happen in that area, I think it's prudent, I think you're being wise and moving forward with maintenance that we need to do. Um, and I think some things over the past year because of discussions have gotten pushed down the line. Uh, so I'm I'm glad to see we're just stepping forward, moving, moving up with regular processes, I appreciate that we have the budget. I can use that money for that. Mister Anderson.
Um, we did spend point oh nine dollars on the Golden Dale wastewater treatment plant, um that is an option. Um, it's definitely, we we've created a precedent of it um along with the two fifty. Uh, so you guys are saying you're having questions on clarifying number one, what's giving us this, these questions?
Well, it's getting to the age now when we talked about how long it could actually run if it was forced to be put in service. Um, right now, we don't have, we would be guessing not very. So if.
Is it the pump or what?
It's the pump part of it. Um, you can use, oh, and I, I'm just throwing this, if you wanted to use oh nine dollars, you could use it on any of the other stuff that needs to be replaced also. So there's a laundry list of things we need to replace.
Right, but we're doing triage here. And we're gonna be doing triage for a while.
And I saw that laundry list before I was elected. From Mister Soder, I had seen that laundry list.
Yeah, my concern is, again, I don't operate the plant, but I work with the people that do quite regularly. My concern is knowing how difficult it is, especially after the chase we ran through when we had all this stuff with the buildings and trying to get stuff and get parts and get people to come in. If the main clarifier goes down, we could be, because you can't run a plant without a clarifier. And then now we're piggyback, now we're depending upon the second one to run. But how long, depending on what happens with the, then I'm not saying there's a, that it would happen, there's a chance, a good chance it shouldn't happen.
So what is the project look like for clarifiers, is this buying a new clarifier?
No.
Selling a new clarifier, is this hiring a company to come refurbish our clarifier? Or is this hiring the PUD to refurbish our clarifier?
No, they don't have that expertise.
Didn't think so.
They take it out to bid.
Okay.
They take it out to bid, they bring some, a contractor in and they refurbish it. Basically, they rebuild the motor, the pump is actually, a portion of it's replaced and then the rest of it's reconstructed. So yeah, it's a complete makeover, but no, they, you are correct, they do not replace the clarifier, the whole piece.
What is fund balance in there currently?
I, it sits right around five hundred.
That's what I thought happened. Yeah, I guess on this project, I'm, I would be open to oh nine, but I am fine using fund balance.
I see this as, how much, what do we got, three hundred and something thousand in fund balance?
Uh, it's five hundred and something.
Five hundred and something thousand? Uh, well, we did get to two fifty and we need to spend it, so we need to move forward, so um I'm fine using fund balance as well, we're gonna probably need point oh nine dollars when something else breaks, now that we won't have fund balance.
That's kind of where I'm looking for, I, I don't feel right asking the case Peter board for funds when I have. So if I didn't have fund balance, then I have no problem asking for a handout, but I have to put myself in the same standard that I ask everybody else with the case Peter board, so hence the reason I said fund now.
Great.
Okay.
Sounds good, thank you.
I do have a piggyback question.
Yeah.
As we are, at least last I knew, still going out and doing uh gonna be planning for a bid on the O and M contract down there and hiring an outside company to arrange all the fun stuff. Would it behoove, and I believe it would behoove, um, the county to hire an independent consultant to look at the current uh operations, uh and um I I hate to word, use the word judge or critique. Uh, but um, give us a status performance of the existing company doing the contract.
I apologize, I should give it to you, we actually did have that. Wasn't done by an independent consultant, it was done by DOE.
Okay.
Because they were turned, you know, PUD was turned in and DOE went down with two inspectors and they inspected the operations of that, so I will get that and give that.
Right, well, because the the question I, uh, and I, it may be in that, but we currently have a new charge this year to pig out a line. So, I mean, to me, I have questions on how much is the fruit packer paying in stormwater services? Uh, how long has that line been operational, is it them, I mean, is, are we charging the right amount? Is there maintenance that should have been done that wasn't, are we just gonna get back in this situation three years from now? Is that something that this uh study um looked at, or do they just look at inside workings of the plant?
DOE looked at inside workings of the plant, we had the study done by a consultant, independent consultant. Pigging out, yeah, this is actually the last one that we've done. Three other pigging out contracts over the years. Um, you are right, it was an oversight, it should have probably been done sooner. Um, but we never had any problems with it and the thing doesn't run at like thirty five percent capacity. But yes, when we did the check, it needed to be done and it's being done, and that was the last the last station that needed to be done, that area for this, for that.
But do we look at when we're setting rates? Do we look at, because we say rates, do we look at we collect X number amount for your bill? But because of what you're flushing down, now we're picking out lines every five years at fifty thousand but we're only collecting thirty thousand, this is not cost effective kind of scenario.
No, we actually put pigging in there, and if you look at the spreadsheet um I know it's been a while, we'll actually be having this conversation before long again, when we look at what the rate increase will be for this year. But we actually computed that in.
Into the rate, okay.
Into the rate increase that it would be this much.
That that helps, thank you.
And that's why we're getting, to be honest, that's why we're getting, um, we're building the reserves a little quicker than we normally would, not that we're making you know, bank, because we're not, but I mean, we have increased the rate, so there is more intake.
Yeah, is that your question for now, um, I don't want to make Aaron wait.
Yeah, no, that was how I.
Okay.
And that's all for you today?
Yeah, unless the board has something else. That was long, sorry.
No, I think, I think we cut your time a little bit too. Into your time, we rearranged a little bit. Thank you, Joe.
Good morning. Um, I assume, did you still have the packet from last week when I was unable to be here?
Yep.
Um, so just for environmental health, um, they're still a little bit slow, but definitely seeing permits and design reviews starting to pick up with the nicer weather. Um, we have some, a couple of people attending the FEMA training, we get quite a bit of money from the state to do public health emergency preparedness, and so for the first time, we're actually kind of getting our FEMA trainings up to date in a manner which the state would like to see public health be, so um, that's been really nice to get some of that stuff done. They're continuing to work with code compliance and support that group. Um, they're doing a lot of work with the um work groups at the state for the drinking water group A and group B and both the safe and healthy communities, which has to do with infrastructure improvements, school inspections, um, and I'm forgetting the third thing right now. Um, but it's about community, community building and infrastructure. Um, they are tracking a new onsite septic code starting in twenty twenty five and probably later this year, they'll do a presentation to the board of health as we have kind of a better understanding of what the actual requirements are going to be and how they'll impact the residents of the community, but keeping an eye on what that will look like as far as sharing that information out publicly and then the implementation within our own department, so. Um, and also tracking a new cottage food law, what that will do is most baked goods jars and canning um items used to be licensed under the USDA and those are gonna be transitioned into the local health um jurisdictions. So those will be transitioned probably as well in twenty twenty five, and so looking at the rules for that and what the impacts of the um of transitioning that into our food program will look like, so. I would imagine that that will be, make us quite a bit busier than than we are, so we'll look at that as that's coming up. Um, for clinical health, uh, we've been doing a lot of outreach. Um, we had someone provide breastfeeding classes in both White Salmon and Golden Dale recently. Um, the nursing staff supported an Narcan event at the library in White Salmon, they had over fifty um families come to that, it was very well attended. Um, I did give you the January numbers, um, I don't have February yet, so it looks like we haven't given out any Narcan yet this year, but we have, just not in January. Um, and then working with the schools, the nurses are doing some outreach in schools about just some health education and hand washing with, um, I think third grade and under is who they're working with right now, so. Uh, we're getting ready for our WIC audit that's coming in the beginning of March, um, that's usually a pretty heavy lift for us, we do that every other year. Um, so working through that, um, there is a clinical fiscal component, so everybody's got a little piece of the pie on that. Um, and then the same for our sexual reproductive health program, our audit's gonna be in June. Um, that's actually fairly intense for everybody that's involved, so uh we're preparing for that as well. Questions about any of those things, no? Uh, administratively, um I asked probably a year ago for verbal authorization to hire a health educator. Um, where I'm just getting around to making that happen, so I'm just re-asking for verbal approval since it's been a year.
Yes.
Thank you.
Still in your budget, right?
Oh, absolutely, uh, it's, we're gonna actually end up sending some money back to the state this year because I haven't been able to spend what the state's given us. Um, we worked pretty hard at keeping that to a very, very minimum, um, but still there's just no way with infrastructure that we have that we can and some of the programs they give us money for, we don't do, so at some point you'll see us send a check back probably in the June timeframe as well, just for your awareness, but yes, so yes, I have money, I'm sending some back.
So do you anticipate like with the food program as it changes on the cottage industry and you have to update and will there be any funding?
I don't know if there'll be funding specific to to the cottage food law, but we do get the foundational public health funds and that helps cover a lot of the work we do, in addition, you you know, that's a revenue producing program, the food program, it's all based on fees and, you know, permits and fees, and so that's usually runs pretty even.
Now, do you have excess food money that you're giving back?
Uh, no.
Okay.
That's not.
I I know seniors are struggling with food money, so I'm like, if you're giving some back and they need some, we can have a conversation, but.
We're giving money back, so they give us money to do a community health assessment, um, which we've participated in, I think every three years. But we've done it with the consortium of um the area, so we do uh Providence usually runs it up, but it's Wasco, Sherman, Gillum, Clickatet, Skamania Counties do it together, and so we participate with them. Um, and so they gave us, it's not our year to do this, so that's I mean, just off the top of my head, I think that's a hundred and twenty of the thousand dollars that we're sending back, because we're not doing that work. Um, they gave us a lot of money for community, they gave us a hundred and fifty thousand dollars just for communications, that's what would cover a health educator position. That we're not gonna spend all of that, especially because we haven't hired one yet. And our fiscal year ends July first, so most of that money will also go back, so it's it's not money that we could reallocate um to anyone else, because I looked at it and if I could figure out how to spend it in this county, then I absolutely would. So. Um, okay, so we had that. And then I don't know, we had talked about getting a dietitian um as a casual employee, and I think you had wanted some information, I wasn't sure if you'd actually gotten that back or not, because we wanted to set a casual rate for them, now, let's revisit that conversation. So we're required by WIC to have a dietitian on staff. Um, we have had a dietitian who's been contracted through Mid Columbia Medical Center for as long as I, at least twenty years, I would say eighteen for sure. Um, so we were paying fifty five dollars an hour to contract with with MCMC for dietitian services, in October, they let us know that they were gonna raise their rate to seventy five dollars an hour, which I thought was astronomical. Um, so we declined continuing our contract with them based on the price point, WIC doesn't have a lot of money. Um, we're we're okay funded, but we don't have a lot of for extras, um, I didn't think seventy five dollars was appropriate for our budget. Um, I called around Skamania County contracts with their dietitian, or they have a casual dietitian that they pay sixty five dollars for, and so between the, you know, we haven't raised the cost of living. And so between the, you know, we haven't raised the cost of living for this fifty-five dollars for at least four years. Um, and not wanting to pay seventy-five, I felt like sixty-five, because that's what Skamania does, was a nice kind of middle in the road. So, um, I, I need to get the dietitian on board. It's not really optional, it's a requirement for the program. So really, getting the board to be okay with having a resolution to set that casual rate. Um, we have had them as a contractor and we think that that is maybe not in our best interest and to actually have them as a casual employee. They work about eight hours a week, so um, that's, so that would also be a change to our org chart in addition to setting the casual rate.
So at casual, are we then not paying any benefits or anything else?
No, not at eight hours a month.
Eight, eight hours a month or a week?
A month.
I think you said week there.
Sorry, I apologize. It's a month.
Okay.
So, and I mean, some months is less, some it's more, it's just.
Okay, yeah, I'm good.
Okay, and it's covered within our budget.
Right.
So I'll send over the resolution.
I'm just kind of one of those more bang for your buck kinda guys, so I guess that's kinda where my brain was going is. You know, if we can get something cheaper, we can feed more starving babies kind of scenario, uh, and so that's where my head was.
Um, and and I appreciate that, but that's kind of the going rate. And it's especially with a casual employee that you're not paying the benefit rates, which I usually figured the benefit rate at about forty-two percent. Just based on what's in our department, and I think um if you look at just straight, uh, like a benefited position for a registered dietitian. With the credentials we require, I believe is in the forty-five dollar range, so really it's not, it's not that far off from what we would actually end up paying. If we had a full-time employee that was benefited, if I did the math correctly, but just saying, so.
And if you, you talk to HR about this?
I did. Uh, so can I have your verbal approval to move forward with getting that resolution? Or I'll submit the resolution to you, but also the org chart changes, you have no concern. Good. Um, we, as far as finance goes, we just transitioned whenever, I think you saw our front desk people is actually now our finance person.
No, I didn't, because you have frosty glass and I can't see it anymore.
That's true. Um, we are very grateful for our frosty glass, by the way, thank you. Uh, we've gotten a lot of good feedback from clients too, and actually just went to a class where um it's really important for clients to not have their back. To to windows and then that makes them feel more vulnerable, and so when we are working with vulnerable populations, that's, we're, we're very grateful for that, so. Um, we transitioned our finance person to the, our, uh, our front desk person is now going to work in our finance department. She's already sort of started and is doing amazing things. Uh, we are interviewing Friday to fill the clinical admin position. That she vacated in White Salmon, so um that should get us back up to everybody's staffed again. Um, and then Elizabeth, who's our finance manager, actually just signed up for the government uh finance course. And she's doing that with um a few of the folks from the auditor's office and then with Jen as well, so. Uh, we're excited that she would be able to do that. We still have a lot of money for training that I have to spend out by the end of the year, like two hundred thousand dollars. Also, not going to spend all that, um, but as you see, um. Requests for travel and that sort of reimbursement, we're, we're trying to get people to go to trainings and and take those opportunities because I don't. I mean, I'm a hater about this. I don't see this happening in the future and I just wanna be able to use it while we have it, so.
I, I wanna thank you for when you do put it in there. The little space that says budget impact, you actually fill it out, grant funded by da-da-da-da. Not all of our departments do, it's very helpful for us, so I, I just wanna say thank you for doing that.
You're welcome. Yeah, no, I, we, in both public health and behavioral health, I have money for training that I have to spend by June. Um, so I, I'm really pushing people to take advantage of that.
Yeah, cuz I think you're dead on right, you're not gonna have the money forever. The state will eventually have to make some cuts and sounds like they might be doing it this year, so.
Yep.
Train them like him.
Yep, so it'll just make us stronger in the long run. Uh, we, as far as contracts, I believe I only have one outstanding contract that you probably have not seen yet for public health. Uh, we are, we're gonna work with an outside billing agency. Um, our, our billing practices are not up to snuff on any stretch of the imagination. And the um, what I think needs to happen to get them to green are beyond the capacity of anyone in our department. Um, just based on lack of experience. Um, I can't figure it out, nobody else knows really. So we've asked someone that that's their area of expertise to come in and help us get straight, um, so that we are where we're supposed to be. Um, once they help us with the, you know, the credentialing piece, I talked about this in behavioral health too, is a very prohibitive process. It takes a lot of time, and if you don't have the experience, there's a lot of ways you can make errors that will just make it take longer. So um, that contract, I believe maybe next week will be on your agenda. Um, and again, that's, I have money to pay for that contract as well. I think um I'll have to look at the terms again if I remember correctly. They charge me ten percent of whatever revenue they make for us. Um, and so when we're looking at, we bill for immunizations, any tuberculosis treatment and such for reproductive health. Um, I, I mean, we probably, they would probably be billing for like, I don't know, less than five thousand dollars a month. So they're not gonna make a ton of money off of us, and they know that, but they're, you know, they're excited to help just get us squared away, so. Um, it's kind of a, they're out of the gresham area, it seemed good, so that will should be on your agenda for next week. Uh, questions about public health? Anything?
Doing a great job.
Thank you. Uh, behavioral health. Um, so they've been pretty busy. I think, you you know, you've seen the stats and I, I didn't get a chance to kinda look up and see where we were for February this morning. But we're still averaging about seventeen calls. Um, for, you know, we talk about calls, so when I provide these statistics to you, these are the calls that we actually have responded to. Sometimes we do get phone calls at just and then a phone call, and I don't necessarily track those, so these are actually, we have had a contact with an individual in person.
My, my question on the graph is last year we were at this number and this year we're at this number, is there? I mean, it's hard to correlate, is this an issue because there's more people struggling with mental health? Or is this now an issue because more people understand, we now have resources available, so there's more phone calls being made?
So I think, I think you've, cuz I did those too, so I, I think you've got the numbers backwards because I look at this. Um, so in January of last year, we had twenty-eight calls, in January of this year, we had fifteen.
It's gone down.
So it's actually gone down pretty significantly, and I, and I don't, do you have, I can hand it to you if you don't have it.
I'll, I'll look it up, we're good.
Um, January is at the very.
Last week's packet, isn't it? Did you put it in this week's too? That makes it easier, so that's good to back and deal.
So when, so when we're looking at that, um, because again, we had, I think, seventeen calls, well, I mean, I know we had seventeen calls last February. Um, I don't think we've quite hit that mark this February. Um, but what I, and this is completely conjecture, by the way. Uh, one of the things I've considered when looking at these numbers is, we as a county went through a transition time where when you got called. Uh, we called and said, hey, can you come help us with this? No one showed up. And then we had a transition when people called because they knew someone would show up, and then as people, more education about when is a good time to call? What can we do for you? What, you know, how can we participate in this? I think as everyone kind of learned their role in a crisis scenario, um, and became more comfortable with how to triage this. I think a lot of the triage is happening without us having to get there, so um, that's one of my theories, which is conjecture. But um, cuz I, I don't really think that there's any other reason, our numbers should be higher because we don't have outpatient services. It's been over a year since we've had any outpatient services. Um, I'm, there is not less people in crisis in this county. Um, so really hard for me to explain any other way why those numbers would be so different. Unless the only other theory I have is based on the weather and that people just couldn't get out. Because we did have a pretty rough weather event in January, so.
I'm understanding, but.
You got it?
Yeah, I couldn't find it in this week's package, it's showing me agenda, sorry, I can, I went to last week's.
Did you have any other questions about that or are you good?
No, I think, good enough.
Um. We uh had three of our folks support the, there was a community event at the library in Goldendale CPAC put on. It was a movie screening and then the names escaping me right now, but we did have three of our staff that supported that and helped moderate the conversation afterwards, so. They were out there, um. We are looking at as far as some spending of money, um. I'm having someone come out, we're looking at sound masking in the building, so obviously privacy is very important in a clinical environment. Um, and those, that building would, well, amazing, it does not do a lot for sound. Um, you can hear the person that's in the office right next to you, so um, we have an opportunity and the funding to look at um some sound masking. And so we're working with Hyphen, who's the same folks that did the, the furniture here and are doing our furniture now, so they're gonna be coming out. Um, another thing we're having done is the um, we are looking at getting security cameras. We did inherit the building with security cameras and I was told that the county wouldn't support those any longer, um, because they were too old. And so uh, working with IT to get a quote to make sure that we do have some security cameras in there, um, and around the building. Um, I think just, we have a lot of folks that are spending the night in our parking lot, I, I believe, so. Um, and I think that one of the theories about our weather event was related to someone actually unplugging something on the outside. So making sure that we can see that sort of stuff, so. Um, so that's pending. Um, I am doing another furniture order, I'm gonna be doing, I'm doing them in uh increments. Cuz I can only do about one room at a time, so you'll be seeing some more bills for those. Um, and then looking at a, we're. I'm not sure which direction to go, here, we'll go this way first. Um, I have been working with the managed care organizations, so we're doing negotiations for contracts. And so um, we've met with both Community Health Plan of Washington and Molina. Um, we do uh, and United Healthcare actually, which is an interesting conversation because they don't, United Healthcare doesn't actually have members in our county. But they want to contract with us in case one of their members comes to the county. Um, so I'm still trying to wrap my head around that, but if they're willing to help us fiscally, that's, I'm, I have no problem with that. Um, on, and they will want to contract with us on the, the private healthcare side, once we get to the point where we're taking people that have private insurance. So, um, so we've talked with those three, we're still waiting to have conversations with Coordinated Care and um. AmeriGroup, whose name just changed, and I can't remember what their new name is. Um, so we're waiting to have conversations with those two. What we have presented them with is just kind of a, what it would cost to do business from July of twenty twenty-four to December of twenty twenty-four. Um, the bottom line of that was one point eight million dollars, but we padded it very heavily with the understanding that. Um, if you want me to start something up, I need funds to do that, I have to pay for new laptops and um. The credentialing piece, like all of the overhead that it costs to lift um that many people, and then, you know, your, that. Benefits, we looked at things like medical directors, which are extremely expensive, um, and then just continuing to cover the time, my time. Um, and then some other time to get that off the ground, so. Um, but we didn't really get too much pushback about the budget that we presented. Um, we did get asked to separate out, separate out kind of the one-time cost, startup cost, so that we have like. They understand that this is just a one-time thing versus this is what it will actually cost day to day to run the department. Um, so I am working on redoing that, um, to get that set up. But um, both, all of those conversations have been just really, really um productive. I've been very clear with them that I'm not starting anything until I have funds, so I'm not, I'm not hiring people, I'm not anything. Until I know that I have that money in the bank, um, or at least that we have some sort of guarantee that it's gonna be here very promptly, so. Um, to that point, we have the opportunity to work with a recruiting agency. Um, I have funding through Carillon as a workforce agency uh building, um, and I'm. Will likely send a contract for your consideration about starting that, because I don't wanna wait till the last minute to start recruiting. And start getting that process going so that we know kind of what's out there. I think we're gonna have some challenges around recruiting and hiring, um, and that's just based on the industry, it's an industry-wide thing. It has not really any, much to do with here, um, so just, I, I would kinda like to kinda get that moving. Um, also because the money that's funding it ends in July first, so I wanna get them paid for before that money goes away. So, any questions about behavioral?
You are a busy gal.
Mm-hmm, yes, I am.
We appreciate you.
Thank you.
I have your questions.
Yeah, and I would, I would go so far as to tell you that we may not agree on much, but I'm hopeful, at least this is coming from me. And I hopeful that they agree that you're not allowed to ever leave or retire or quit or move or it's not allowed. We will hunt you down.
I will keep that.
I, I don't know that that's unanimous, but I hope it is.
Um, thank you, that's very kind.
Thank you, if you laugh, tweet, I'll leave.
I couldn't even possibly imagine trying to find you.
Well, it would be multiple people.
I, oh, it, it, yeah, I.
Yes, it would be.
The, the things you've done are just magical.
Thank you.
So in terms of moving forward with that, um, you know, there's one point nine million dollars and nobody even blinked their eyes.
Um, for six months.
That's just for six months, and this is, you know, to get this thing up and running. Granted, could we spend all the money? Likely not, because the recruiting is gonna be difficult. Um, but that's, you know, what the MCOs are wanting to agree to. So we're starting these conversations with the MCOs, we've met with two of them, we've got a couple more to meet with. Uh, we wanted to double check and check in, this is the direction the board wants us to go. Because when we start writing these contracts and agreeing to these contracts, they're gonna wanna start paying. Cuz we wanna start getting dollars in ahead of time so that we can start, you know, if the goal is, you know, July one to start providing services. Well, we've got a lot of stuff to do before that.
I know, I think, and I appreciate the July one date, but I, that's very unrealistic, just for the record.
Kinda like the last date, it's a little unrealistic.
Yeah, so, I, I, I mean, that would be nice, and I think, I think people are frustrated and I can appreciate that too, but I don't think. That anyone, including myself, or and I maybe you all as well, understood how much of a lift it was. And the work that's required to actually launch that, like, it's, it's not, we didn't inherit someone else's business, we didn't inherit someone else's policies. Um, equipment, like, it's, it's a much bigger lift, I think, than anyone really understood, so.
I don't, I don't personally see a July one, and I would be very worried and cautious. That if you push too fast, you're gonna make mistakes and mistakes have consequences now.
Where, where you've already learned that lesson.
That's my point. Back to the original question. I really wish the state would do its job and provide mental health services, but they won't. Um, I don't necessarily believe the county should be in the mental health business, but somebody has to be. Um. So I worry that we're gonna step up some big program and three years from now, the state's gonna go, well, we're not gonna give you money anymore. We helped you launch it, now you guys gotta run it. There's absolutely no way it would continue.
So I think.
Then people get angry or people die. Um, and that's, that's, I guess, the part that worries me, it's not that I have the problem of stepping it up. It's eventually some other board is gonna get told, you no longer have the budget. Now what do you wanna do? Um, and that's gonna put the county at a hell of a problem later, um, but. I can't neglect the people now because of what might happen later, so I am in favor, a very cautious in favor of moving forward.
I, I think when we met with Molina, I think they really addressed that too, because you, you know, the Medicaid organizations are required to maintain network adequacy. In, in the areas, right? Like, they're, it's, they're up to them to make sure there's adequate services. So they talk to, you know, you're a rural area, you're the only game in town, so if we don't support you. Then our members don't have anywhere to go, so they are very invested, and I, I share your concern, and I think the county is at big risk on this project. Um, but I think as far as, at least for Medicaid funding, I, I think we'll be okay there. And I, I, there's, there's quite a few opportunities, I think, that will take us to the five and ten-year mark without too much problem. Um, after that, I don't know.
Uh, that's, that's the, the, I like to think that I have pretty good forethought and I can see what's coming down the line and, you know. I kind of play my puzzle six moves ahead, but this one, I don't know. Uh, but I can't be afraid of what could happen. Um, so as long as we're doing it. And it sounds sensible. In a sound sensible manner, making sure we're crossing our Ts and dotting our Is and. Um. Not getting ahead of ourselves, I'm, I'm still on board.
And I, I think we're gonna submit an, a new organization chart to you at some point in the near future. Um, and as with the budget, so we did the budget to like, everybody's at work today, this is all of the people that we need. But understanding that, A, I'm not going to do that cuz I can't onboard twenty people at one time. Um, so we'll add one piece and then work that through, because with a startup. You can't just add those players in, you have to add the player in. Figure out what their infrastructure requirements are and then move from there, so. Um, even though it'll be presented as like the big picture. Um, we're still, I'm still planning on the, the stepped approach, make sure that we're sustainable and that we have the right people in the right positions. So I think if we add too much too fast, we'll just be chaos. And also, we've already learned what happens when we do something too fast.
Yes, but even when we do it too fast, it's better than what we inherited. Um, I, I do not believe the. Mental health option in this county that we inherited was a sound. Um. And healthy for the public, so. I believe it is now, and I believe it's getting better, so. That's good.
Again, I just really appreciate your work. And your thought and how you approach things. Very methodical. And I appreciate that.
Okay, well, we will. Uh, get on the calendar, the, the next M C Os and get back to you, I mean. The other issue is, you know, right now, the direction we've had is, is that. We don't have county dollars to spend on this, and so they have to step up to the plate to pay a hundred percent of it. And to get this thing going, and that that's the direction that the county is sitting in, this is, we got drug into this, this is not where we want to be. And if in the end, we can spin it off four years from now, that's even better for our liability interest. Um.
I, I think if we. If we put dollars in now, we're setting a precedent to them that we'll put dollars in. If we make them step up and do the whole thing themselves now and say, nope, nope, no, none of our dollars, they know what they're getting into.
Oh, just wanna be clear that when we go to the M C O meetings, I can continue to say that cuz I don't wanna speak any.
Yep.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Good, always good to see you, Erin.
Yes, you too.
Thank you.
Okay. So would we long to break for lunch now?
So.
It was awful early and we have, I don't know, like ten minutes worth of discussion afterwards.
We do.
Um. Well.
If that.
Maybe.
We probably got more than that. So I don't know, did we get? The letter from Richard, um. For we need to sign, the board. Uh, needs to get something to. Jeff, based on our case of Pita meeting. And I was hoping to see that on. Somewhere on here. Recall? For that contract?
Sounds like they have not presented anything to the.
I'm not, I can't come up with anything.
Right, I mean, so that was, that was the whole point of having the case of Pita meeting was so that we could. We could have the case of Pita meeting, so that we could get the letter to get it to Jeff, so that Jeff can apply for the grant from the Oregon Connect Program. And I don't see anything on here, so I don't know.
Was that, that was not signed at the meeting? Um, Chelsea is down there if we wanna ask a question, but. Okay.
Um. Well, I wouldn't mind breaking for lunch, um, so that we can get this figured out, and I will get in touch with Jeff Renard and Chelsea and make sure we have something, because. I would hate to not send something in.
Think Jeff, did Jeff submit a letter? From the airport? For approval?
If he did, he would have sent it to K Speed aboard, not to our clerk.
I remember something recently from him, from about three weeks ago that needed to be. Yeah, and it might have been for something different, so. Uh, take that up.
So they have a. A letter of support that Jeff sent February ninth. Or the senators, wait. Oh, never mind, this is, this is for, okay, this is the other one. I'll figure it out if we. I'll figure it out, I'll get back to it after lunch.
Okay.
Uh, with that, would you mind breaking for lunch?
I'm.
Mr. Christopher?
I have some things.
Fine with me.
Okay, I'd make a motion to recess for lunch.
Second motion.
Motion in a second, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I opposed, hearing none, we will be back at one o'clock, thank you very much. Uh, a letter of support for the Skyline Hospital?
We have a copy of that.
I don't have it here, it might be in the pen.
I'd like to be a little bit. Please, you know where it would be?
The letter of support.
We're looking for the letter of support for Skyline Hospital.
It's nature of signature.
Okay. Uh, Madam Chair, we have before us uh an endorsement for Skyline Health's Advancing Rural Surgical Services Project Funding. Um, this is for a letter of support for Skyline, um. Um, requesting dollars um from, I believe, the uh Congress, um. Either C D S or C I P spending. That's the same thing, one's house, one's federal.
Okay.
Um, my motion is to approve.
We'll second the motion.
Motion in a second, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
I.
Aye.
Opposed, uh, hearing none, the letter passes, thank you very much.
Hey.
We added something to your business.
We have legislation discussion. Um, I wanted to add this uh to the discussion, um. The last year, um, when it comes to, this is, this is on federal, federal legislation, this is what used to be known as earmarks, which they have brought back. Um, it is known as the C D S congressionally directed spending on one side, and then the other side has a different name for it, I think it's Capital Improvement Program or something. The, we just signed a letter of support. For um, the. Skyline Hospital that's gonna go through, um. Uh. Uh, which program? Rural. Rural Development. Um, we as a board have not had a sit down to discuss. Um, which C D Ss were looking to support this year at the federal level for large projects within the county. Um, for example, like the rural, the one we just signed will not compete with like the airport. But there's multiple different co- competing projects, we have. Um. Representative Newhouse and I believe. Uh, Senator Murray, who both sit on appropriations, which have a big thing to do with this. Um, last year, the C D S dollars, we got one million. Um. Through N- Newhouse. And four million through um Murray Cantwell in Senate. Uh, for, and then Oregon, we had another four million, so we were looking at about nine million dollars. Um. And we as a board, you know, we support, but we didn't really think about this logically, like which, where are we gonna put our, our main support behind, are we gonna give a list that's going forward? Um, something I wanted to talk to you guys about, they opened it up, and this is. You know, the last year's. We supported these dollars. It has not moved forward yet because they haven't passed a budget. That was the whole point, uh, the earmark says, if you pass a budget, you get your earmarks, if you don't pass a budget, sorry, you don't get your earmarks. And then the next question is, well, what happens if you pass a budget piece by piece at a time, and your earmarks are within that budget? Rather than continuing resolution, so there's a lot still to be worked out. We're still hopeful that um the main one we got was the nine million for the bridge last year. That by the end of the year, those will move forward and we'll have a chance to get that. You know, we've got. The airport still there, um, the city of the Dell or city of Goldendale might be interested in their airport. We've got a lot, a lot of projects in which people are putting asks for, I think, the potentially um the housing authority with the. Uh, senior center. But we, as a board, have not talked about priorities or goals or what we'd like to support, or if there's any county projects we would like to push forward. Um, to our federal delegation that might fit in that, that op- opening. Um, other than the airport, which we pushed last year.
With the bridge.
Huh?
With the bridge.
Or the bridge, yeah. Uh, but I was thinking county, not as in like, the bridge is not owned by the county, the airport is all half owned by the county. Um, is that a conversation we all would like to have, and if so. How do we wanna have that conversation be, you know, between us or? Or with our partners? And that might be something we could add to the agenda for next. Next week, um, asking all of our partners to come forward. Uh, maybe send out a, you know, an all message thing about like, what are you all looking forward to, and? And it sounds like this is not just a one year thing, this might be a multiple year thing, so if we actually wanna be successful with our federal delegation, we need to be thinking two years, three years out. On what our asks are gonna be, so that we can get our portions together ahead of time. So I'm just talking about being.
I mean, if you all feel it's pertinent to have a round table discussion with all of the. Other entities. Whatever. Um. My biggest concerns have always been, are we signing a letter of endorsement for you? And because we signed a letter of endorsement for you, now we have less of a chance of getting our own project. Because you've got five signatures on yours and we've only got three on ours. So I've always believed, while I wanna support everybody in the county. If your project is competing with a county project, we should not be. I wouldn't say not be supporting, because we are supporting, we're just not going to help push you across the finish line and jeopardize our own project.
And, and you know, there's, there's that, that base level part of it, but remember, there's so many different pots of dollars. It's the legislative staff at the federal level who are gonna be like, okay, you know, we might be able to sneak this one in here, we might be able to do this, there's a lot of horse trading that goes around. And it might be, you know, be a good idea if, if we as the county. Board of County Commissioners said, you know, like, these are the priorities, this is the stuff that, that hits all of everything that we want, so if you're looking into horse trading.
So you're looking at, and, and correct me if I'm wrong, I don't wanna put words in your mouth. You're, you're looking at the idea of. Calling all the partners and present your plan to us, there's ten things, we put it like on a SEDS list and rank them in our order. That we feel are the most important or not most important, is that kind of this idea?
I'm thinking more, it, it's not, it's more collaborative than that, um, I know that the city of the Dows, I'm looking at the old mayor of the city of the Dows back there. Um, they.
Old mayor, sir, I would.
The previous mayor of the city of the Dows. Uh, and I believe that the city of the Dows has been exceedingly successful in bringing all their groups together, they all go together out to D C. Um, and advocate for dollars, and they brought millions of dollars back by taking that, that cumulative approach, uh, if.
Twenty years now. Setting back delegation.
And it's not, so it's not just like.
So you're not looking at ranking the items, then. You're looking at just the group putting together a list together with all, kind of like our SEDS list, you might say, we're just not gonna rank in you. There's no one through ten, they're just on.
Depend, depends on how the, the group wants to do it, though, I mean, again, though, we're trying to think, and I don't know if they rank them.
Sometimes they'll go back, their priority list that they all support, that keeps other entities from going back the next day and saying.
We should be number one. That's what I was saying, it was a ranking thing, but. Then you would need all those entities to sit through a ranking. And I mean, as long as you had a protocol in place, kinda like. Our SEDS list, everybody gets the ten items. I want each one of you to rank these. And then we're gonna collect all the papers. And however that turns out ranking. When you add all the data. You know, if you rank it a one and you rank it a two and I rank it a two, it's a two. You know, if it's a one, three and three, it's a three. Um, kind of mathematically. Um. I like that approach, because it can be a, without pissing people off. Because you downranked their project. Um, I think that can come in very handy in order to rank the projects. Um. Without offending anyone. Um. But I do think that approach of everybody getting on the same page with a ranked list. Um.
I mean, the reason I bring this up is that everyone is looking at C D S spending now, we've got, you know, the land trusts are looking at it, we've got everybody going for their. Pet projects in essence. And at some point, you know, it's who's got the most horsepower, you know?
We need to be.
Right, but in the same regard, I've continuously kind of argued. That everybody's going for congressional delegated spending or even at the state level. And. We haven't been doing a good job of that, county levels. Sure, we've gotten some bridge stuff. Get a little bit of this, a little bit of that. Uh, but we really haven't asked. And. I think we can do a better job. Of creating projects that we know need to be done. And I don't care if that's a damn clarifier and a water treatment center. Um. And. Trying to receive some funding that way with our own project. I don't care if it's new bleachers for the fair, whatever, we should be able to make our own list.
So I, I guess that's the direction I'm going, is, is that we, we have those letters of support looking out, but we also have the things that we need to do. And we need to be able to rank our own, so that we can go for C D S requests, I know, you know, but you also have to think we're competing against our. Everyone else, and so that's why I think, you know, especially between. The state and the feds and the new ways that they're doing it, cuz for a long time, it was, we don't do earmarks are bad things, you know, direct spending towards direct projects, everything needs to go through a ranked process. We still have those programs, we can still send letters of support for those projects going through, but now that we're to this earmark game. I think we have to think about doing it a different way. And.
Yeah, but I think it, it, but I would also say that it needs to be. Yeah, but I think it, it, but I would also say that it needs to be. However, we approach this, it needs to not only be fed but saved. Because we need to. Have some kind of. Control. Over what gets appropriated at the state level if it's not something that's on our radar. And I'm sure we can all think of one project. It's got an appropriation that's not necessarily on the county radar. So if we had a list and that was ranked number ten, maybe it wouldn't get funded. And something else that was ranked a number one would get.
We do have things that are competing there. I mean, we put forward an application to the state for the Dells Regional Airport. The city of the Golden Dale put forward an application. Senator King only had three hundred thousand dollars to work with. He went with this one. Versus, but we also at a, at a county level, we didn't have it ranked, so we had no reason to push for.
Right, but I'm, I'm kinda looking at it that we need money for the senior care facility. And we can't seem to get, but we have seven hundred thousand dollars that we necessarily don't want. For dog, for five days. I would have rather seen that in a, the senior. Care facility. That if we had a way to rank those on a state level.
Are you thinking you would like to just have that list for the county only? Or you include all the partners too in our list?
Oh, we need to have our county list, but it needs to be gone over with each of the partners at the same time. So everybody submits their list and all gets put on one list. And then everybody's asked to rank those ten projects in your order of importance. And then we'll combine all that data and rank them accordingly to how the anonymous vote went. But I don't just wanna list turned in for federal dollars. I see a specific problem. That we've encountered on the state level, that I think that list needs to be a state list as well. To keep us from running into.
It gets really convoluted because it doesn't look good if you're number ten, but you're on. In something that's behavioral health related where they're throwing a bunch of money at. You know what I mean? And you've got all these other projects where they're not throwing money at it this year. And so you've gotta be able to break that out in, in essence by category in a lot of instances.
Yeah, but I would think even if it's rated as our number ten, the fact that it's on the list is important. And if a delegate. Look, I can't get money for one, two, three, four, nine, but I can get money for ten. Give, give me the money you can give me. You just know that if you, if you've got, if you've only got one dog, one bullet to shoot out of your gun. I prefer you to shoot it up here at number one, number two, number three. But if you're, if the first, you know, nine rounds of your clip are empty, then fine, give me number ten. But at least they know that number ten is the highest on our priority list by having him ranked.
So the problem is, is we've got the federal CDS coming up quickly. It's a conversation we need to be having much sooner, and I mean much, much sooner rather than later. And so for this go around, because we're behind the eight ball. You know, this is usually something like, we've had many instances in which, you know, a legislator would call the last minute on a Friday. What do you think of this project? And he'd call, you know, natural resource, economic development, wherever that project may sit. What do you know about this? And how does the county feel about this? I wanna get away from that. I want, you know.
Well, we, we kinda talked about something like this. That it was either last year or the year before during.
If we create it knowing we have a short timeframe, we're creating it for this, then we can move on from there and, and use it as a full time. Funding ranking list. As we polish it up.
I just don't see how we're going to get to. I mean, there's the long term, like this is what we wanna do for the next legislative session, but we're already way into it for the federal. The state, we have plenty of time for the next state legislative.
So this would be a good starting point.
I'm just saying, you know, we should send an email out to all of our. Our big, big tent people saying, are you looking at federal CDS appropriations? If so, what are you looking at? Can you give us a one page overview? We'd like to take a look at it and then have a conversation with you.
Is, great, and is there a place to pull all those from? I mean. A lot of those are in your mind because you've worked with them, but where do we ensure that we touch all of them or reach out?
Pretty much everybody with an acronym.
That's not a state agency.
That's not a state agency. I mean, we sit on what, twelve of the different boards, so all those people. Plus anybody else with an acronym you can think of.
And then our own department directors as well. I mean.
And then odds are we will offend a few people that we forgot to mention their acronym, but they can join the list as the, the list goes on.
And you're saying time is short, is our next workshop a day that we could fit them in or is that not soon enough?
No, I actually don't think it is. I was trying to find.
Tuesday afternoons are open.
Yeah, I'm looking at Tuesday. What was the? CDS that was.
But in the same regard, I don't know that they need to. At this point, I don't know that we need to have them all in the room and we're not gonna be wasting their time being here. If we can reach out in letter form. Signed by the Board of Commissioners, that if you are looking for federal funding. Please give us a synopsis of your project. And then as we move this forward, then we have a meeting with all of the folks in a room.
That'd be the quickest way.
And also maybe in that letter, a, if you can think of any other acronyms, feel free to share this letter with them.
For programmatic replies, please note that the White House plans to release the president's budget the week of March twenty eighth.
Yeah, I don't know that you're getting in front of it for this year, at least not with a round table with groups.
Yeah, no.
I think we're probably gonna get stuck doing it the way of the past this year. Maybe pick and choose who we're signing for this year, but we should plan. To set up a procedure going forward so that we're ready to roll for next year. Uh, cause like I said, I know we've talked about this before and it was either last year or the year before and it just.
And for me, the timeframe. Being so short, probably the only thing we may be able to accomplish is our own, our own list. And then add everybody else in later.
And just continue to sign their letters of support and take the consequences. You need a microphone or sitting over there.
Where they used to do it, and they may still do it that way, is they would go in the spring, in March. When, and to get their request in, they would visit typically both. Senators from both sides of the river as well as both members of Congress from both sides of the river. Because we also included. Representatives from this side of the river sometimes in projects. And then they go back in the fall. So you introduce it in the spring, get it in, and then you go back in the fall when they're wrapping the budget up or nowadays continuing resolutions. But, you know, as they start to whittle away the list throughout the year. Then typically they found those that come back in the fall. You know?
I would imagine that, and correct me if I'm imagining wrong. That each of the acronyms that send somebody back there to DC paid their own way to DC. The city wasn't picking up ten people's tab to DC.
And I think the way it is now, last time I heard it was the college president and the commissioner, the mayor, city counselor. School district superintendent goes sometimes, chamber commerce director goes sometimes, hospital administrator. So it depends on what the issues are, but there's a core group that goes at least once, if not twice a year.
See, on the county level, if you had two hospitals and three mayors and you might have a twenty person contingent.
I remember one of the senators set the advantage of doing, Wes took a book back. That was prepared by one of the staffs that had the one page project list, the cost. What you're asking for, where you write in the design, you know, was it a concept where you design, were you in the build phase? And then. Each got about twenty seconds to present these on the floor. And so the more information they have when your senators is in a.
Well, that's what I'm looking for in our. Top ten list is not just a name of a project. But a book put together that kind of resembles our little title twelve, just a little bit smaller. That, that has a little summary of each project. Uh, in where it's at and everything else, because you're, you're trying to educate them through your papers. Cause you can give them a twenty minute presentation, they're busy, they're gonna forget tomorrow. They need cheat sheets. Hence the reason I was saying rank them and. Summaries.
So I think we've talked ourselves into a longer process and developing a process, but where would you like to go with this year? In the short timeframe portion.
Well, that's why I was, if we can send out an email to, you know, all of our agency.
Requesting a summary of any.
Of any CDS requests that you're.
Any CDS request you're, that you're gonna be asking us to sign a letter of support.
And I mean, that's usually something that economic development has always managed. For the most part with regards to CDS, this is all big grant stuff. This is the stuff that we have the economic development department for at some point. And this is usually where we go with it. Back in the day.
So your recommendation is to pass that off. And advise the Director of Economic Development to send such email. Is that the direction you're asking for?
Well, the problem is, is the time is short and our director is gone for the week.
I've that, well, that's where I'm getting to. We, we've come to a solution that we're sending a letter. I'm trying to figure out the solution of who's sending the letter.
That's what happens when you show up.
Yes. So we could direct.
Did we find it? We found it. Look at there.
And I, I'm sure Alisa would be happy to help you. If we're sending something quick. If that's landing on your plate, because your director and staff are gone right now.
But I, you know, I'd like to include also our nonprofits, you know, think of Matt Adams Resource Stewards, Columbia Land Trust. All those guys that, you know. We, we just added new business at least two letters this week. And it seems like we're always doing letters at the last minute of support and I'd like to get ahead of that, that we're not.
I just worry that because we're not the city of the Dows with ten people, we're gonna end up with forty. Um, you start adding nonprofits, you start questioning, well, what's the dollar limit on a nonprofit? Uh, only bigger nonprofits or do they all count? Are only the ones that are associated with this?
The people who are planning to put in a CDS request is where I was shooting. Usually you don't see the five, ten thousand dollars CDS requests have minimums.
Well, we can give it a. In White Salmon?
I have no idea.
Oh, it's an awesome project that started, I don't know how many years ago. Uh, under David Sauter was deeply involved in that. Uh, it's a parcel of property in. White Salmon, Washington that was owned by the county. It was gifted to the county through an estate.
Are you positive on that? I thought we paid for it.
I thought we paid for it too.
I may be wrong.
And I think the. Six hundred and sixty thousand that.
Is what we paid for.
What we paid for it.
But my understanding.
Why, why that numbers in my head? I don't know.
Is that we have a. Long-term lease agreement with Columbia Gorge Affordable Housing to develop a assisted living and memory care facility. Something that we don't have in our county for our senior citizens. And so we've been, uh, they're down to even having the design done. They have money. They just need the match that we're asking for now and then they can move forward with that facility.
So they're.
That be income based or any one?
Um, they have both, so they had to have, I believe, and, and again, I. Haven't been presented this project for two years. Cause it's just flat tabled until they get the resources. But if I remember correctly, and we received the federal funding, they had to have seventy-five percent of it. Uh, be income based or, or seventy-five percent of it qualify for. Poverty standards, you might say. Um, but again, don't quote me on that. I haven't had a update in two years.
I'm just sort of curious, cause our local hospital twenty-five years ago had it on. For senior care. And they couldn't make ends meet.
So. And this. Has penciled out because I think some of that is subsidies from the state. Where the hospital may have not been able to get those subsidies for the state. But what, what has happened is we've ran into a. Inflation glitch. Um, this is Lori's board, so she can probably speak to it more than I can. What was about a million dollar shortfall in breaking ground through inflation and COVID. Has turned into like a two point five million dollar shortfall. Um, so it's just flat tabled until we can find the, the resources to, to do it. It wouldn't hurt to have Joel come in and give us an update, cause like I said, I haven't had one in a couple of years. Uh, it's just been kind of withering on the vine, looking for funding.
Just curious.
And we do have in the, uh, Washington State House Capitol Budget. They do have three million dollars appropriated. So that came up this morning on the discussion on, you know. Would my seatmates like me to push when I go up there this, tomorrow and Thursday?
Yeah, so they've already got money invested in. The last couple of times we've asked them to close the gap. Um, they haven't been able to, so.
And usually the gap glute, as they find more money, the gap grows, but by about as much as you find because of the cost of the construction going up so fast.
I would say most of everything was done under the previous administration. Um, our administration. Essentially was presented it with the funding gap and is still looking at the funding gap. We haven't done a whole lot in three years, just trying to get the funding out. And that's what I know of that. Blitch in the matrix.
And we will reach out to Mr. Madsen to see if he'll come in to give us an update and I'll let you know when he's here so you can hear more about it.
The, yeah, the original county plan was the way they had it penciled out. They believed it would be a success. I. Have questions. Uh, because some of the rates that people would have to pay were, were astronomical. Um, but then again, I look at it, I sit on the law enforcement firefighter disability board and we have one gentleman in. In memory care that pays over seven thousand dollars a month.
And there, there is a combination of housing, you know, different. That they work through those budget ideas and affordable and regular living, so they have a combination of offerings.
And I think that there was like, I wanna say sixty-five beds or something. And, and again, this is. Kurt, you know, I'm, I'm stating the wrong number, cause it was two years ago and I believe like twelve of them were memory care. Um, and the plan was to build that one, get it up and running. Uh, and then. Turn off that success and build one over here. Um, but.
And the, the thing I liked about it too, it's all the way through from your first time assisted living and. And what that looks like for your housing, all the way through hospice, so that you would never be separated from your families.
The big concern I had at the time, and I still have today, is I would love to. I guess I'd say, I mean, the word restrict is not right, but it's kinda right. I would like to reserve. X number, three quarters of the beds for county residents. My worry is that as these homes are becoming few and far between, you're gonna get a lot of wealth. Uh, moving from Portland and moving out here to the sunny gorge and taking up all the space. You know, they lived in Portland all their life. They're cashing out their millions to retire in White Salmon in their assisted living home. And the people here can't afford it or don't have a space. So I would love if there was some way to reserve. Spaces for us, but if I remember correctly, when I brought that up as a citizen sitting in the room, I was told that it couldn't be done.
And, and there's a lack of beds or housing in the entire state.
That's what we know on that.
Hard to find a place to send someone to. And then you're separate.
It's gonna be a huge problem in about ten years. Um, as the baby boomers get up there. Ninety, you only look forty. You'd be fifty in ten years. I don't even know where we were.
We were.
Think we finished the answer to that question.
I do, I think we're gonna reach out and.
And staff was gonna write a letter.
So that took.
Next item we had is civil service commission position.
Yes.
And, uh, Mr. Rod Smith is. And, uh, Mr. Rod Smith is, um. Turned in an application. Uh, it is vetted by law enforcement and comes highly recommended by law enforcement. So civil service commission. It is my recommendation to the board to appoint Mr. Rod Smith. And if you would entertain a motion, I would be happy to do so, or it can just be put in our agenda for next.
Are you ready to entertain a motion?
Whatever you want.
Right ahead.
Uh, Madam Chair, I move that we, uh, approve the, uh, application for Broad Smith, the Civil Service Commission. And appoint him there to serve.
A little second to motion.
Motion in a second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
I.
I opposed. Uh, hearing none, motion passes and staff will get a letter out to him.
Perfect. And I just want to take a second to thank you both for your. Willingness to give me a little time.
So we had an update on the natural resource, uh, office. Situation where, um. There were some questions about documents, um. Due to a controversial nature and, uh, questions about. Documents, documents missing, documents shredding, uh, just all the questions that came from our board, uh, at least two of us, um. It ended up that. To stop speculation, innuendo or suspicion that the office was locked. Um, and to ensure everybody's safety, that nobody was accused of anything illicit, those keys. Uh, and a narrative were given to the sheriff department to be put in the evidence room so that. Uh, nobody took those keys and went into somewhere so that more suspicion or innuendo would grow. Uh, those keys are still housed at the sheriff's department, and I did ask since this subject had came up. Uh, because he had questions about some of the things, um.
Being the sheriff.
The sheriff, potential document destruction or some things that are questionable with all our, uh. Public requirements for retention are very heavy and we have to abide under laws as those, as a county. Uh, to ensure that those things happen correctly. I asked the sheriff today that this conversation would be coming up today. And where I was in removing the keys and going ahead and devising a plan to clean that office. And right now that question would have to go to him because he does have what's considered an open investigation, uh, as to those documents and he has questions out. Um, I believe the secretary of state and maybe the AG's office on processing. So right now that would be my answer for moving forward with opening that office.
So, so there is an investigation going.
Yes, that's what I was told.
Okay.
Okay, you have a question. I have two questions. Um, how many times did you check out the key and go in the room?
Three times.
Three times.
Actually two, because my signature's on a page that, uh, when I logged it in, I left it twice. Uh, the next two times I had to go back in, I was looking for documents we needed for work process for water conservancy board. I was hoping to have those documents, so I took a posse member with me and didn't find anything, so I locked the office.
So you've been in four times?
No.
Two times, two times only.
Two times. The first time, uh, there was a signature page that I logged the keys in, and then I logged them out two other times after. Just to go in and see. That's it.
Right, but I, I guess I'm not trying to accuse, but you said two times, but then you've checked it out two other times.
No, that.
It is one of the times that you went in this last week with HR and economic development. One of those two times?
No.
So three times?
Three times.
Okay, so.
Because we thought we were.
Three or is it?
We thought we were opening. I didn't include that one because you asked me.
Well, I said, how many times have you been?
Because the board wanted to move forward with the, the, uh, opening the room, so I agreed with. HR and the director to go into the room. And when we did, we realized, um. Nobody else had seen it and the volume of the documents and the questions they had. It was decided that the keys should probably go back to the sheriff's office to make a decision about where do we go with this? And for the safety of everybody, so there's no speculation that someone did something somewhere, we, we locked those keys.
Okay. I just, I, I had never heard how many times you had went in, so I was just curious. And then in the email that you sent out, I have a question on that if you would clarify for me. It says that after Mr. McClure left, process was started that lacked professionalism and apparently without direction. What does that mean?
That means that office staff took it upon themselves, um. That it was up to them to shred and destroy or put documents in the bins.
Okay, now that makes sense. I get it. Okay. Good enough. Thank you.
You're welcome.
So those were only my two questions there. I thought we were going to be. Uh, figuring out what to do with the documents, but if the sheriff still has some kind of an investigation, that's fine. I just hate holding up the office space.
I do.
And, and would, um, ask that. Maybe the chair asked the sheriff to come box the documents up and take them to the evidence locker for now while there's investigation. Then we can get the office back open again, and when the investigation's over, the boxes can be redelivered and, and we'll worry about. Sorting, filing, standing and all that then, but at least the office isn't locked up for nine more months.
And that was a suggestion that we could just box everything up and tape it shut, label what's on it and have a few people in there to do it together and then lock it all.
Well, I would disagree if there's an investigation going on. There is a thing called chain of custody.
Right.
Which has been my problem with anybody going through that, period. I will not direct staff to go into that room and potentially interfere with an investigation. If there's an investigation, law enforcement needs to box the, box up the evidence and remove the evidence from the scene. To keep it from potentially being tampered with.
I understand what you're saying.
So. And then when the investigation is over. Then we can have a workshop, sit here with the doc boxes in front of us. Cut the evidence stickers and then we'll be able to see, well, most of us will be able to see. Uh, what's actually in the box. I don't know.
Well, that would.
Been in the room.
That would move that situation forward.
But since it's an investigation, law enforcement should collect the evidence.
Okay.
So. Oh. I feel that this whole thing has been blown out of proportion for many, many months. Um. And the sheriff had the key and we had asked. I don't know how many times, is there an investigation? What's going on? Where are we at? What's going on?
We, we asked who?
I've asked this board.
Okay.
And then others had submitted di- documentation to the sheriff or whatever. Um, and I thought we were finally done. I really thought like this was over and we were done. So, but you were able to get the key back because we were going to open the room and I thought everything, we were done. And it, from my perspective, whenever a. Director leaves. And depends on how they leave, whether they're fired or walked out or whatever else. The new director, which we didn't have for a while, but the new director's job is to go through those files, whether they be a few files or whether they be mounds of files. And figure that all out. Um, I don't see that it's, it's no matter what, in the end, it is the director's job and that director's staff hopefully working together. To go through those boxes of documents and to separate them out and to label them and to keep it. Or, uh, whatever needs to be reference material or whatever, following the list of what the rules are. Along with what that director feels they need to keep, right? So you can destroy documents according to the document tetris schedule. But that would be, that should have been the director's job. That shouldn't have been staff's job or anyone else's. It should have been the director's job, but we didn't have a director at that time. So I have no problem with, you know, until we had a director, lock it up, the new director, but that's the, that's the director's job. And we, every director that we've ever hired, they've had to do that. Trying to take that away from that director, I think it doesn't do a, a service to the director because one of the great things about going in and going through those documents is it helps you figure out exactly where you were at. And with something that, that touches on so many different things like in there, the director, I think is the appropriate person. When this is all said and done, now that we had the keys, now the keys are back and now there's a new investigation or whatever is going on. Um, which, you know, it'll end at some point, but I think that. We don't have to have the room right now, but when the sheriff's done and we can get the keys, the only thing that makes sense is to have the director and. His staff go through that, box up everything that, uh, that is dealing with the stuff underneath him, anything that is in, I don't know, solid waste or something else. Well, that, um, can get set aside and the solid waste director can go through that, you know, whatever it is. I don't think there should be much in there for solid waste, other than maybe reference material from other things that have gone on. I do have concerns though, if. We get a public records request for something that's inside that office and we haven't went through it. How are we supposed to find it for a public record request? So that's just something to, to throw out there, but I think this is, the whole thing has been beyond blown out of proportion for many, many months. Um, and I look forward to it finally being open.
Well, and I think we need to really be careful to stay away from, um, personal opinion. And also put this in the legal realm because it is in the hands of the sheriff and there's a lot of things that. We shouldn't be commenting on because it just feeds fuel to the speculation and the rumors or whatever else is going on. But professionally, I can say this whole thing started because a whole folly of errors. On a, on a lot of sides with this whole thing. But that being said, what we need to do is find the best way back out of it. And protecting everybody's integrity and the fact that everything is handled correctly is the most important thing. And I will have another conversation with the sheriff. I'm going to encourage that. Sooner than later, or if not immediately, we need an answer on how to move that room on. And what that means. And I don't, I don't want to be looking at another six months waiting to see if there's an answer.
That's my point. I, I. If the documents are evidence in an active investigation, this board should be requesting that the sheriff removes the documents and removes the evidence.
And that, if that's advice is for him, that's good.
And I would also, well, if we have to be supervised taping the boxes and dropping them off in his office. Uh, it needs to be done.
Okay.
And I would also advise this board that it probably should stop checking out the key and going into the room.
No, it's not.
Um, uh, any more going forward? Um. And when we do get the documents back, just for the sake of transparency. And so nobody can say, well, he went through the documents, but he's got a grudge on him and he's got a grudge on him and they don't like her and that's why they did this. We need an independent outside, not related to anybody in the county source to sift through the documents. Uh, to keep what needs to be kept, to scan what needs to be scanned. The other, they can, they can make a pile of all this stuff is totally disposable and all this stuff needs to be scanned. And then we can look at the doc, the boxes and go through it ourselves. But.
And I think.
We need someone who's trained in document retention. To go through those boxes and somebody with an independent eye, so nobody can make accusations. That somebody threw something out or buried something or it put something in or, or whatever.
Financial differences. There, there are financial documents to consider. Um, and I did have that conversation. Uh, a quick conversation with the sheriff that we had thought of reaching out to find an independent source to go through that room. Uh, because it seems like it's. Taking a long time for him to get the answer for somebody to review what he needs to do in there. And I said, if we find somebody, would that suffice for what you're needing? And he agreed that it would be okay with him if we found somebody independent to go through that room for itemization and.
Well, I would imagine, I don't know what the scope of his investigation is. So I don't know. What he's doing. But I would say we need to know what documents have to be retained and what documents don't have to be retained.
Okay.
Those two different things need to be sorted. Maybe that. F fills his expertise and allows him to do, finish his investigation because I can't imagine his staff. He is trained to go through documents and decide which one is by which retention schedule. So, but again. If it's evidence, I mean, personally, there wouldn't be any criminal charges against any wrongdoing at this point anyway, because in my expert opinion. Uh, my Matt Locke law degree, because the evidence has been so tainted. Um, going through so many different eyes at this point anyway, so I don't see there ever being a civil case against anybody. Um.
Madam Chair, question. I mean, is he being accused of kickbacks?
Uh, no one's being accused of anything and this has nothing to do with Mr. McClure. He had left the space and he chose to leave his position and he's gone. This, this discussion is, uh, after Mr. McClure left his position. And it's about document retention, destruction of some documents, um. How the proper chain happened with that, those documents. We have a heavy burden at our county to preserve documents of documentation. And we had a glitch with that department.
Well, someone, uh, surfaced the glitch. Assume.
So what happened was after McClure left.
I don't think you should.
He was, why?
Cause you're in the realms of legal things again. I think it, it's under.
Ending litigation?
No, but it's investigation.
It's fine. Um, after Mr. McClure left, he left a lot of documents in his office. He wasn't the most. Well, I wouldn't say he wasn't the most neat and tidy because all the piles of papers had a place. Um, but he left a lot of documents behind. Um, after, and we've already talked about this on the record, so. After he left, I went down the next day, I believe, and went into the. The economic development department and noticed them preparing to. A big blue bin of documents and asked them what they were doing. Um, they were shredding the documents in the room. Um, and, uh, they had said they had been advised to do so. Um, I told them to stop. Put all the documents in the room, lock the door and file the two-page affidavit with the sheriff department. Um, over the documents potentially being destroyed that may not have legally been allowed to be destroyed. Um, and that's pretty much where we are without trying to throw anybody or any names under a bus. And hopefully I did that kind of okay.
Um, no.
Oh, I threw names under a bus?
Um, it isn't about names. It's just about the whole scenario of what's happening in the realm of some legal. And as a chair, I would advise you that you're better just to, um, and I did. That this is a process we're going through and we have to wait for it to legally play out. And that it's not our place to comment or be involved in it at this point, but that's.
This from the person that went in the room three times?
No, and don't try to villainize me. I did a very legal process when I was doing, and I also had. A discussion with the board about why I went in to look for water conservancy board things we were looking for, and that was a process to get back through where that document was. But I'm not going to expand on any more of this conversation. Uh, it does damage to all kinds of people. Because suspicion, innuendo and different things started happening and. Um, I would advise you, Mr. Christopher, not to talk about these kind of things in a public forum.
Um, well, unless I'm subpoenaed and I don't talk about it in a public forum, if anybody wants any information from me, I'm an open book.
And that's on you.
May, may I say something? I would, I'd just like to say thank you very much, um, to Commissioner Zoller for being very clear. That this is after Director McClure left.
And I.
There was a lot of questions for a long time about that. That was after Director McClure left. This has nothing to do with Director McClure, uh, except for maybe his own organizational functions and how he had things in his room. Um, I would ask though, that, that. Was, did something change materially between? We were going to open the door and have staff start going through it between then and now suppo- there supposedly is an investigation. Was there something that actually changed? Um, to, in order to, to push us down that direction because hearing that we could hire someone outside, um, to go through it. I.
Yeah.
I'm lost.
Well, I would, I would say that for me, nothing has changed. I've always felt that. The investigation needs to be concluded. But I believe the change was from Thursday when. Commissioner Zoller sent an email to staff to. Commissioner Zoller sent an email to staff to send to me, to allow me one day to look at documents on Friday, and then she's going to open up the room on Monday. Um, which I would argue takes a board decision and not executive decision of one member. Um, to then we had a director see the documents and send us a email with his grave concerns. Um, and I believe that is what maybe changed the opinion. Uh, back to, there needs to be some looking at these documents. Thank God, but other than that.
So I think the best I can offer is that I would be glad to go back and visit with the sheriff. And um, see how he'd like to proceed.
I personally. I, I, nothing against you, but I have trouble with that because you've been this liaison for the majority of the time. I, I have not had discussion with the sheriff, you've had discussions with the sheriff. Uh, next thing I know, you've got the key and you're going in, I think that needs to be a discussion.
Innuendos.
It needs, that's not an innuendo.
Yeah, it is, and it, it was handled through the board each time. We had discussions before I did anything. And I'm very legalistic and I'm the one that stands on legal, I'm the one that tries to follow legal. And I'm the one that doesn't talk about legal cases, and I recuse myself from those types of interactions. When it becomes legal, it's out of our realm and we shouldn't delve into it.
I would like.
You would like the sheriff to come in front of us?
That's what I'm asking.
That would be great.
Because I need to, I, I guess I would say, and I'm not trying to slide on you for this. You've been the person handling this for six months. And, and I don't know anything, Jake doesn't know anything, we don't know anything.
You've been updated, Mr. Christopher. You have been updated throughout the process, there's been questions asked and I updated the processes that we went. And like I said, there was a folly on all sorts of errors. Um, you are on this board of commission and in the last six months, if you felt like the cam was getting kicked down the road, you will welcome any time to bring this up in session and give a positive resolution of how to handle this. And I didn't hear.
Tell me not to talk about it in an open session.
Today I did. But I haven't heard anything from you until you make it a complaint today, so. Moving on, let's find a positive way to put an end to this.
Same scenario I have.
This is going to be a personal opinion of degrading, so we're going to move on from here because we don't degrade. Uh, if it's degrading your board members, it is not your time to speak. And that's a rule of boards, that you don't degrade your seatmates or drop innuendos or lead.
You're degrading by, by name calling me right now.
I'm calling out behavior.
I'm just saying that I believe we have a problem in this county with public records. Retention, scanning, archiving, and have brought this up for three years.
And I'm going to say, it's easy to come up with a negative. But it's much easier if you try it to come up with a positive.
I have.
And let's find a positive.
Consultant higher to get the process done.
Right, then let's have the sheriff come in and we'll talk to him about that.
I'm talking about all of them, it's not just the ones in that room.
Well, today we're ending this and we'll move to that another time. I don't want to convolute this conversation. Would that suffice to put an end to what you need is if the sheriff comes before this board and we talk about how he would like to put an end to um whatever's happening so that we can uh certify and document things that needed to be done and close that room out.
I would ask that we, if we need to check with the prosecutor, that's fine. But if this falls under pending, pending or threatening litigation or whatever, to do it in executive, I don't mind doing it in an open session. Um, but I seem to be the only one there. I think the board should be advised and not just one commissioner. However, that needs to happen. The better.
Go ahead, Jake, sorry.
Uh, thank you for all of uh the constructive um questioning back and forth between my seatmates. Um, I would absolutely be in favor of having the, the sheriff give us an update as to what he understands and knows and the direction that he may or may not be going if he legally can. Um, if he legally cannot, I have no problem tabling this until such time that he is done. I would also um like to make sure that, that I give full faith and credit to the economic development and natural resources department and their staff. And that I have full faith in their ability, um, having worked for the county for a long time to understand the document retention schedule, as well as to be able to go through those documents at such time that they can. So that they can properly file them in a way that can either be scanned or brought up for their bit, for their um benefit. For the long-term um knowledge transfer of the county, and thank you very much, ma'am. Or I finally actually know far better today how this occurred than I ever have, so. And I'm very glad to hear that um that Director McClure had nothing to do with any of this.
So I will have a discussion with the sheriff and ask if they'll come before the board and give us an update as soon as possible. And I don't see anything else on our agenda. Is there any miscellaneous ports and comments or executive session? Nothing else?
I just, hold on, let me go through my list, there was a. Oh yes, the Facebook Live event, I had a chance to talk with um uh, the mayor of White Salmon, who's done the Facebook Live event multiple times. Um, she said she would be happy um to help with us on the backend. Uh, but as for facilitation of it, um, she's not sure if she's the right person to use. Cause otherwise it could become a, a city conversation if she was there. Um, but she would be happy to help um staff and anyone else um who would like to help put that on. I think um the sooner we can have this conversation about who we would like to facilitate that conversation, the better. Um, and get it on the agenda and get it out to the public um so that we can advertise for it. Um, I know from my learning experience, uh, we did the town hall for uh the commissioners, three commissioners um for the By State Bridge Authority. And it was, it was bring your questions, any questions you have, whatever you want. Um, and it worked out fairly well. Um, you know, there was questions that were, we didn't exactly have all the answers to yet. Um, you know, as a new organization, there's a lot of questions that are very specific that you're going to have to get back to. My question to my seatmates would be is, does it make more sense to do first an open broad overview like that? Or should we first put out to the public, what topics would you like us to come prepared for to talk about? Um, and then try to define that a little bit more, but that comes before my seatmates. I, I know when I go to a community council meeting, you never know what questions you're going to get. And it's very broad and you know, you usually get back to people, uh, have to get back to people, but.
I like the idea of leaving it open. I think that feels good to the public. But then again, sometimes it's hard to formulate those answers, just like with the radio shows. You kind of get in a corner sometimes and it's like, eh, what's my answer on that? Mr. Christopher, do you have an opinion on formulating questions or leaving it wide open for the Facebook Live?
Torn both ways. Uh, you leave it wide open. Um, you could get questions that are more off base than the radio questions. Uh, but if you don't leave it open, it's almost like you're screening your questions. You only want to talk about these things, you don't want to talk about the other things. Um, so in the spirit of transparency, I would say leave it open. And if a question gets asked like the senior facility and I don't know the answer. I, I'll spit out a number and tell you I think I'm right, but you're going to have to call me afterwards to verify that my number is correct. I don't mind giving. Uh, that's the hard part, cause then if you give a ballpark or you explain it, you don't have the ideal number, then somebody's going to call you out that you gave them incorrect information. Uh, but I think people would, most people um, would thank you for the information you gave them and are happy with the ballpark number you gave them. So I'm, I'm more in the leave it wide open realm.
And, and if you leave it wide open, is there a possibility that the moderator? Um, I've seen meetings where we get asked the same question sixteen times because there's a hot, angry topic. And it's going to be sure that a group comes and pushes their questions.
So that's where it comes, that's why you have a moderator, because the moderator can take, say you've got twelve questions on one topic, the moderator can take one or two of those questions and then only ask you based on that. And then by having the moderator, nobody can start asking um questions that are not appropriate for public, you know. It, it, the program cannot be hijacked in that, in that instance. Um, we also need to figure out which um Facebook account we're going to use for this. Um, there's, we don't have a Facebook account for the B O C C. We could start one. Uh, I know it's been a discussion for a long time, but we could start one. We um, you know, the sheriff has one, public health has one, nine one or uh, emergency management has one, and natural resources and economic development have one. I don't think it's been touched in years, but it was there. We used it a lot during the um COVID crisis and the funds we were getting out and the information to businesses.
I would recommend we don't piggyback on somebody else's and this board sets up its own, even if it never intends to make a post. And doesn't do anything but the Facebook Live, at least it's actually from us.
It's a start.
I'm. I, I have no problem for getting an account for the B O C C, I think that would be great. Um, you don't have to pay for it. Um, one other question that came up, because we're going to do another Facebook Live um for the bridge on tolling, you know, on a specific subject. Um, so that, that one, it becomes more of, it's on a specific subject. There's going to be um, staff is going to be, you have a big overview of tolling of the bridge and everything. We're going to have three individuals there, but then so you can watch, listen to staff to come up with your questions to then ask. And then s- it might be a bridge commissioner answer, it might be staff answering, you know, it gets very specific when it comes to tolling. And, and so, so where that goes though, in terms of that is, is looking at the, how we run that. If we want to do it as an open, we'll be taking. And the other big part is, is there were, there were questions, in case if nobody had any questions, there would be at least be things that to talk about that could come up ahead of time. Um, either from staff or I, and I believe it was J L A, the public, public um. Not public records, the public company, their public communications, or they came up with their own set of questions in case if nobody had any. And to start the conversation to, then you'd start talking about it and then you'd get a question. It actually worked fairly well, that would be a follow-on question.
Okay.
But again, um.
So staff will work on getting us a Facebook account. And then I think my second question would be, do you have suggestions for a moderator if Marla can? I'm trying to think who we've used before, it's been a while.
Uh, I know from a lot, you know, Tammy Kaufman, I don't even think she lives in the county anymore, has been a moderator for a lot of these. Um, she does a great job. I think she's working in Hood River now. Um.
That's the newspaper.
That would be, we could, we could ask to see if the newspaper would like to do it.
Yeah, I'm, went in and out of my head for his name. Lou.
Um, there's also the, is it Columbia Community Connections Newspaper? That's been posting a lot of stuff in Clickidat County, uh, might be interested in moderating it.
That might be a good resource. The guy that replaced Jacob Beltran over there, I can't think of his name.
No, no, Jacob Beltran, he worked for the newspaper.
Yep, yep, yep.
This is the online, the online one. Um, but again, you know, if, if Lou would like to do it, he's the, in essence, the paper of record. Um, I'd start in local, it's in the county, so I'd start there. Um, but yeah, we could ask him if he'd like to, and if he has any experience doing it, that would be, that would go a long ways.
But he moderates the primary or the uh, debates.
Yeah, but this is a bit different than the debates.
That's kind of what I'm. I would recommend against it because he does recommend, or he does do the debates, and I would like to keep any political thoughts out of this. Um, I, I don't want people thinking they're the same thing.
Should we reach out to Columbia Connections Newspaper or?
Yeah, but whatever you guys want to do.
Whatever you guys want to do, I want to have an in-person town hall, but whatever you guys are willing to accept, I will accept without. Whatever you want to do.
And we need to set a date, that's more important.
I know at one meeting I attended as a moderator, Mr. Local Mr. Hill moderated and he did a good job, I think it's Jim.
Jim Hill did.
Yeah, he did a great job, but that was in-person moderation, I don't know how I feel about.
Um, for a timeframe, when, when, when would you like to do it?
Right, were you, were you planning on doing it during the day, planning on doing it in the evening, I?
I would say the, the evening would make the most amount of sense most.
Give it about three weeks out so we can get the website set up and find somebody and fine tune.
The questions?
Yeah.
I would say the twentieth, but that's a White Salmon City Council, and if we need the mayor's help, um, we could do the twenty-seventh or thirteenth. I don't think it would take too awful long.
Yeah, I'm good with either one of those.
Or the thirteenth of March or?
Yeah.
In April then.
April.
March.
Why are we picking Wednesdays and not either Tuesdays or Thursdays, which are our normal workdays?
Uh, we can do Tuesday or Wednesday, I'm just looking at what I don't have, pick things on.
Say, that's what I'm looking at, that's uh Tuesday or Thursday, as I say, for any other random meetings we end up having.
What time?
Uh, we did ours at seven, because then it's, you know, it's online, everybody's at home, if you want to tune in, you can tune in. How about Tuesday, the nineteenth? That'll give us time, uh, shall be time to, to set it up, um, hopefully very shortly, so that when we start advertising for it, we can at least have the link.
Do you have a set time, is this from seven to eight or?
I'd just say it starts at seven, we can go as long as you want.
I'm good.
We're going to have any kind of rules for this or uh, is it just free for all?
Well, that's the moderators' jobs to come up with the rules. I mean, we're just trying to answer questions from the community, then when people say, ah, we don't know anything about this, what's the senior facility?
Right, but what I guess I'd say, what if they ask you questions about Southwest Washington workforce development? Or if they ask me questions about the board you're sitting on, is the moderator going to know where to guide the questions? Or is the moderator going to ask the question to the board of which the one working on that would then?
So we did it, we did a little bit of both. What we had um for our first one was each of us took a set of topics, you know, and you know, like um tolling. I did tolling, somebody else did engineering, who's on the engineering committee. I, that worked for the, the bridge, but the bridge is like running down a bridge. It's very singular, it's working one direction. We're talking about stuff that could be anywhere. I would say that if the moderator poses the question and the moderator knows who's working on it. Otherwise, I think between the three of us, it's, if it deals with a committee that you're on, well then hopefully you would take it. Um, if you give your, your answer and Commissioner Zoller has something to add to it, that's, that's allowed too. This is not meant to be a debate, like a political debate, this is, this is information sharing.
This is my question. That, so if, if the question is asked to one of the members of the board, do the other members of the board get to answer the same question? Cause they may answer different.
I don't see a problem with that.
And that's one thing I see in the questions asked on the local radio station. Um, is not necessarily the answer of one commissioner is the answer of the board. So I would think all commissioners should have a right to answer each question if they so choose to do so. They might say, I agree with Commissioner so-and-so and they're the expert. Uh, they might disagree, but they should have the ability to disagree.
Uh, I think that can be worked out. I, I agree.
That's what I'm saying.
Leave it to all of them. Yeah. But again, the, you think a lot of that comes down to the moderator gets to choose a lot of that and how they want to moderate it too.
Yeah, maybe they could. We, if we can find somebody right away, they could formulate how they would do it and then present it to us and have a discussion.
I mean, and hopefully the moderator would have like, this is the way I want to run it, but um. Who's going to reach out to uh the gentleman from Columbia Connections? Um, I'm trying to find his name.
Since this is your. Concoction.
I say it's kind of a big idea, isn't it? So.
You would have more information on what you're looking for.
I can, I can.
Brainstorm.
I can reach out.
Yeah.
It helps.
And then if you don't find somebody, let us know.
And if Commissioner Christopher would like to do an in-hall, in-person town hall, pick a date and let's do it.
Wow. I uh. I appreciate that. Let's get through item number one and we'll move to item number two. Um, and. I'm, I'm fully game. So. Maybe we can learn from. This. To see how we want to do that.
You don't want to just set a date so that at least when we're marketing, we can say there's going to be an online one this date. And if you'd rather be in person, there'd be one this date. I think the marketing for that would be a lot easier.
Fine with that. Do you have a location?
I, this is, if it went the way on that one, this is your baby, you decide.
I, 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 that's why, one of the reasons why I'm. I believe if you do the Facebook thing, you're going to get ninety percent responses from the west side of the county. I could be wrong. Uh, but I believe the majority of the people are going to be from the west side of the county, and if that was the case, I would pick the location. To be the east side of the county for the in-person one.
So.
If it's exact opposite. And you do this Facebook Live and ninety percent of the people are talking about. Golden Dale, Bickleton, Soul or whatever, then I would say let's have the in-person one in White Salmon. I kind of wanted to know who was going to be attending the first. Since I only get one, I'd like to do one in the community.
Nobody said you get one. That, that was.
Start with one. I've told them, given permission for it.
There's.
Well, I think since my two cents, since we're doing the Facebook Live, if we do it first, we should give opportunity to the east side that. Generally isn't online or on Facebook. So maybe the first in-person town hall should be held here in Golden Dale.
Okay.
So again, would we like to set a date? And Golden Dale is not the east side? Golden Dale is.
This is the middle, I know. And should we go east?
Well, I would say unless you're willing to do a bunch of them, there's four thousand people that live close to this building. And there's only four hundred that live closest to the next building out there. So. Uh, if you're trying to reach the masses. Uh, I do think you need to get in your car and drive, but uh the first one I, the first ones. I would say would be, need to be designated in the bigger communities. Um. So you picked March nineteenth for that one.
We have a workshop on the twenty first. Would that make sense to do it on the twenty first so that we can market for both?
I wouldn't, you see, you want to do them on the same week? Why not? Why not cover two different months and do it on the following month? Do it.
I'm just saying, if you're marketing, I think it, it makes a lot of sense to do them close so that you, when we put it out, I'm just thinking as my marketing brain.
You want to set it up or do you want me to set it up?
We're here working.
If you're having me set it up, I'd do it the next month.
Thank you for coming, you guys.
Thanks, guys.
Sorry to interrupt you for questions. My wife told me that's an over.
No, you're fine.
Because I had a question about your town of tolls and bridges and all that.
I'd be happy to talk to you about bridges and tolls and all that. Give me a call anytime.
See ya. Should ask him if he had bruise on his shin.
April sixteenth.
April sixteenth? Kind of day is that? I don't have.
The day after tax day.
It's a Tuesday. What time?
I don't know that I'd necessarily wait till seven. I'd do them at six, but. I feel the same way with Facebook Live and sevens after some people are ready for bed. That's your baby. This one I would say started since. There.
April sixteenth.
Yeah.
In person here in this, uh, do we want to do it downstairs or do we want to do it in this room with overflow downstairs? No. But. It should be. The mandatory recordings are over. We only have to take public comment if we're going to make an action. But we should. Record. And I would recommend record. But. Do we want to have it downstairs and just take over the foyer? Um. And set up chairs all the way out into the foyer? And do it like the little Golden Dale Town Hall thing that happened? Couple months ago? Or do you want to do it up here? Better microphones.
I was thinking up here if we're recording it so that we can post it on the YouTube channel.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
And maybe bring some chairs up to pack a few more chairs into the room. Uh, and then overflow would just have to be in the hallways and. And, and I don't know if we can get these mics to echo on those speakers, but I think we did before.
So I guess is the goal to do something root to anger everyone the week before so that people are willing to like. Drive in and come to the thing and, because usually if people are mad, they don't usually show up.
We'll see.
And do we have the Youtubes up yet on the website? I'm not seeing it anywhere.
Yeah, we do not. Yeah. I've been having problems with the website. It keeps giving me error codes every time I try to download the videos. Uh, we are receiving training and will start implementing it this Friday.
And the way I would like to. Have the in-person town hall. Is a little less formal. More like our citizen comment, you might say. Uh, but, but still have rules in place. Um, that you can ask two questions. Ask the specific question, get an answer, ask another question, get a specific answer, next verse.
Are you looking at as more of question and answer or are you looking at more as let's have a conversation?
Conversation, but some people might want a second question or a follow-up question. And I don't want somebody to get mad because they were only allowed one question, somebody else got a follow-up question. Uh, it's just one of those are trying to make it even for everybody. So that nobody has, well, I have twenty-six questions and wants to hijack the whole meeting because they have twenty-six questions. If you say two, that gives somebody their main questions. You have dialogue. Not a three-minute kind of a thing. It get to the question, the question is this and we'll discuss it. And then if they have a follow-up or a totally separate question, they can go with that. But we do hold them to the two questions, just so everybody has a chance.
So you're not looking to have a moderator then for that?
Uh, just to open discussion.
Okay.
Sign up sheet then.
I would imagine we would have a sign up sheet for people that kind of like our public hearing for people that want to ask questions. And it would be good if we can. Check with IT because I know when we did, it was a solar hearing or something. We showed the video downstairs. Why we were being live up here. That was overflow. And we had the speakers on down there, so everybody that was not in the room can hang out down there until then we called like the next five people up. That were on the testimony list and so we can save a row of chairs and if there does turn out to be that many people. And I would imagine a lot of the people are going to have the same question as the person that asked the question before them. So they might say, oh, don't have a question now. Did before, don't know. And maybe there's nobody that shows up. We'll see. So I will. Work on some basic rules and bring them to you guys for. I just want to make sure we're the same for everybody and nobody can cry that somebody else got something they didn't get.
So are you going to put set time limits then on it?
No.
So.
If it takes you thirty minutes to ask a question. Um, I guess that's possible, but the board chair would, once they ask the question, the board chair should have them stop until we can answer the question. Unless you have a better idea, I'm hoping.
Uh. This one's your baby. Why don't you come up with the rules how you want to, submit it to us prior to, we'll review it and agree to it.
Hey.
Sound good?
I will try to even have that well before and give you an idea next week because I don't plan on having much.
Okay.
Great.
I don't have anything else for the good of the order.
Mr. Christopher.
I don't think so.
I have nothing.
Okay.
Um. Motion.
Madam Chair, having uh no further business before the Board of County Commissioners, um. And noting, uh, we do not have any workshops scheduled for February twenty-ninth. This Commissioner Anderson will be in Olympia. Um, I would make a motion to adjourn.
A second.
Motion and a second, any discussion?
Um, other than asking staff if they can reach out to Randy and IT and have him come down here to fix my stuff. Before I forget, if I finish this motion and then I'm going to forget to tell you to, please. Tell Randy down here.
All those in favor?
I.
I. Those opposed, hearing none, meeting closes. Thank you very much.